That's in line, okay. I'm going to call the order, the planning board meeting for February 2nd, 2022. My name is John Delio, I'm the vice chair. The rest of the planning board can introduce themselves, please.
Molly Friedland, alternate one.
Mark Rich, board member.
Nelson Gill, board member.
Rick Lyles, board member.
Patrick Lyons, alternate two.
Uh, before we get to agenda item two, uh, we received a phone call from John Singh today, around noon time, that he was tending his resignation effective immediately. Uh, so he will no longer be a member of the planning board. I guess some people have been around for a long time that could, I mean, I've known John forever. He's been on the planning board forever. And we was able to figure out that John was initially appointed to the planning board as an alternate member on April 15th, 1991. And he was appointed as a full member on October 16th, 1995. I'm not sure when it was exactly that he became chairman, but I suspect that it was at least 20 years ago. And so, uh, I think we've lost a very valuable member of the planning board. He's done a great job for the city of Elzwick with the planning board. Now I'll miss him sorely. Uh, let's get to item number two, adoption of minutes from the January 5th, 2022 regular meeting. Are any comments or additions or deletions or? Seeing none, uh, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Adopt the minutes for the last meeting?
Well, the second.
Whatever meeting date it was.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of course, I didn't point out Molly, that you'll be a voting member tonight.
Are, do, does she automatically come onto the board now with John's resignation? Is that?
No, it'll be up to the city council. I suspect that Alena will present her name to the, to the council for, to have her appointed as a full member.
You're the longer serving alternate?
Yep.
I am, yep.
Yeah, and I think we can, um, save election of officers for next month.
Yep. And then probably the same meeting, or Alena will start the process to have a second alternate chosen for the planning board. Uh, item number three, preliminary plan review for major use site development entitled Beaumont-Kinsling self-storage for Beaumont Commercial Elzwick LLC. The proposal is to construct a 31,650 square foot self-storage facility consisting of three buildings of climate-controlled self-storage units and one building of drive-up self-storage units on a 2.02 acre parcel, tax map 16 lot 8-1-2, located on the Kingsland Crossing. The subject property is located in the commercial zoning district. So there's someone here representing the applicant.
Yes, I'm here. I'm Jim Kaiser. I'm on Zoom with you at this time, and Rich Trot is interviewing with you personally. Um, we're here to provide, uh, your overview of this, uh, hope to get the application completeness accepted this evening. The project is on Kingsland Crossing Road, um, in between Beechland and the, um, Jackson Lab facility. Uh, it's a two-acre parcel, uh, that we are putting on a little over 31,000 square feet of self-storage. Uh, three of the buildings will be, uh, fully climate-controlled, so that there'll be only interior access to each of the storage units. And then one building is, uh, for a little bit larger storage units, uh, but they'll be more the traditional style. We've gone through it with, uh, staff and on the project. Uh, there's a few things that we've asked for waivers on, uh, understanding the board may or may not grant those. Uh, we think we've got everything in for at least completeness review with maybe a couple of conditions associated with, uh, coming back for final approval on the project. And, uh, I think one of the bigger things that we worked out with staff was, uh, some stormwater issues, uh, whether it was, um, protect or covered under the, uh, large detention facility, um, down by the Jackson Lab building or not. We've provided, uh, full stormwater treatment in accordance with the city standards and also still want to run off, uh, rate control. That we have a very small, um, increase, uh, in the two-year storm, which is a low-volume storm. And then we're, uh, maintain control, uh, at a 5.4 storm, which is the larger, uh, more concerning for flood criteria, uh, within the areas downstream of the site. Uh, so we'd be more than happy to answer any questions the board may have on this and, uh, look forward to working with the city on, on this project.
Jim, first, before we go any further, you said Mr. Trot is here in the audience. Could you come up to the table, please? Just in case we have questions for you. Uh, we'll open it up to the board for questions.
Like, there's no office on site, is that correct? No sort of office, right? So it's just the units themselves?
Yes, that we just, uh, pre- pre-arranged meeting to releasing and, and, uh, closure of leases and stuff like that, but it'll be call and, uh, onsite meeting, uh, rather than somebody staffed there all the time.
And how many storage units are there actually? I know if, I may have been in here that I just missed it, but, you know, talking about square footage and all that, and I got that, but how many actual storage units are there?
Uh, Rich, do you know if we had what we had as far as?
Approximately, uh, 225. Jim, you'd mentioned the rain, the rainwater there. I want to ask if you guys could elaborate a little bit on this point. The note says this lot was not accounted for in design of detention pond at Jaxx. And then there's some further suffixes there, the criteria for making an exemption, an exception. I remember when the Jaxx building went in, there was some concern about runoff, uh, on the backside of the building towards the residential lots back there. So could you just elaborate on that point a little bit for the board?
Um, you mean downstream of the detention pond, or?
It would be downhill, yep.
Yeah. Uh, all this water does end up flowing through, uh, this city's collection system, which then turns around and drains towards, uh, Jackson Lab and then into the basin. So even though, uh, we are controlling, uh, water leaving our site, both in treatment and in runoff rates, uh, it also then proceeds down through the, the, uh, larger detention point, which then applies additional controls in accordance with what that pond was, uh, designed to. So, uh, we're providing, you know, a good overall onsite and then, then further, uh, mitigations by the established treatment, uh, mitigation point downstream. So that there should be really downstream, there will be no net impacts or effects, uh, created by this develop- development.
I can add to that too, if you'd like.
Sure.
Um, so back when Kingsland Crossing was constructed as a new road, um, in concurrent with planning to build the Darlings', um, site, there was also a 10-lot subdivision of the land surrounding it. So there was a Site Location of Development Act application to the state, um, for all the impervious surface created by the new road, which became public, the Darlings' site, um, which totaled like seven acres. So there was a detention pond designed next to what is, next to behind kind of what is now Jackson Laboratory, um, to accommodate all of that. They also overdesigned it beyond the state requirements to account for some impervious on those 10 lots in the subdivision. I've not been able to track down exactly how much that additional area is. So there was a question of whether this lot was one of the lots accounted for. It's not. Mr. Trot does own an abutting lot that would have been accounted for in there. Um, so that's where the comment comes from, is that that design that was done didn't include this lot. Then you have, regardless of that, you have the ability to, if you're comfortable, and so at some point, we need to have a conversation about what makes one comfortable, you can allow an increase in flow off-site versus the pre-development condition if you're confident that everything downstream can handle it. So that's the citation that goes along with that note.
Thank you.
Just following up, and does the city feel confident that they, that can happen?
I don't know that we're to that point yet.
Okay. But the city will be taking a look at that, that public works?
To the extent that we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I would suggest looking at the language in the section I've cited. We don't need to make that decision right this second.
Okay. But that'll be a subject for a TRT review? I'm sorry?
CFS differential on the small storm. The large storm maintains at, at zero increase, uh, leaving the site.
Following up that, I mean, that's based on the assumption that it's a 0.3 cubic feet second increase, uh, I guess I'd be concerned if that figure is actually wrong and ends up being more, you know, what do we, what does a city have to make sure that that doesn't happen? Or if it does happen, where does the mitigation go? It shouldn't go on the city, it should go on the airport. I mean, not, not just necessarily at opening the building, but if, if this turns out to be wrong six months from now, you know, who, where does it fall to, to fix it?
I mean, we're using the same analysis method as the original pond was. So, I mean, what you're doing is you're asking, okay, is our analysis right or wrong? Is the original analysis right or wrong? Uh, we're using best engineering judgment to determine and estimate the flow rates leaving the site. Uh, so under, you know, our best management practices and engineering judgment, um, I don't think that we're incorrect in the way we analyze this, these storms. So, um, you know, you, you can come back and you can, you know, debate whether, you know, the original one was right or wrong. And, and if it's wrong, then, and we're right, then what are, you know, what's the difference on it from that standpoint? They use sound engineering practice to design that one. We use sound engineering practice to design these systems. Um, so I think we're all in the same, um, engineering criteria for application of stormwater on this site.
Would it be prudent on the city's part to ask for a peer review on this?
Um, I haven't really thought about that until this moment, but, you know, that's the only way you're going to get a definite, um, analysis of what's presented to you, right? Because we don't, we just don't have that capacity of staff. Um, we can't do that every time, but I think maybe if any of you remember other instances where you've allowed that, it is written into the ordinance, if there's capacity, you know, downstream, whether it's a neighbor or within the city's system, that is written in for you to allow that. But, um, the question becomes, what is the capacity? And I, I don't have the answer to that. And, you know, even if it's a little bit, does it take away from somebody else down the line who is supposed to be able to utilize that capacity?
That I think for me is the interesting element here, that the, I guess I didn't realize that the pond was overbuilt in the first time in my head. I just equated it to Jaxx, not the whole, not the whole region, you know? But, um, the fact that this lot was not accounted for, I guess that, for me, becomes the interesting element. So if the next lot, which I guess your lot as well, but when that lot wants to get developed, does that then subsequently create a problem that goes beyond the original engineering, which, you know, we may presume is good for that pond?
And I think, you know, we don't necessarily need to get into it at this meeting, but maybe some questions of the already design engineer of, like, when I've been out there in person, it feels to me like that's kind of a split point. And if this site is being built up a little so that it goes in that direction, and it could go toward the Beechland, I don't know. Maybe I'm totally wrong on that. I haven't thought it through that hard, but.
I think our pre-development watershed indicates that it all goes to that pond.
Right.
And not, uh, towards Beechland Road from that standpoint, that field inlet that's in front of this site goes directly into the catch basin and then flows down, um, towards Jackson Laboratory and into the detention basin. It's also, you gotta, kinda, you can get into a lot of things. I mean, if the city wants to do a peer review, I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to worry about it any, by any means, but you also gotta remember when, when we did Duncan Donut several years ago, when that went into effect, um, the city required that water to be treated, uh, for a stormwater capacity, which, um, reduces those low-level storms. Um, we never evaluated that for stormwater rates because it was all within the original, um, analysis of that pond. So that has reduced rates of the small storms going into there, uh, from that standpoint. So, you know, you're gonna have a balancing act every, every lot that you go onto from that standpoint, and it'd be probably difficult unless you run a total watershed analysis on that pond again to say whether it's oversized, undersized, or, um, just right where it should be from that standpoint. So, um, I think, you know, to use that, if the city wants to do a peer review, like I say, we're not worried about it, uh, from that standpoint, but it's, you're looking at our site, which is a very small site in that scheme of, um, impervious area out there between Jackson Laboratory, um, and Darlings Auto Center, um, which has, um, substantial impervious areas that go into that pond, um, and aren't, uh, necessarily providing stormwater treatment on it that we have on our site from that standpoint. But we'd be happy to work with the staff or with a peer review, whichever the board feels is the most prudent way to proceed.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but I'd be more comfortable having a peer review to, just to ensure that other property owners and/or the city are not adversely impacted. It's up to, I mean, Mr. Kaiser doesn't seem to mind doing a peer review or having a peer review done.
What's to lose other than some money?
Right. Yep.
But, but, but the other, going, going back to what I thought was part of the original question, though, is notwithstanding who's right and who's wrong and peer reviews and all that, you know, if there is in fact, um, you know, a storm or a series of storms or regularly storms that cause this, you know, cause some overflow of some sort, how do we determine the liability for that, the responsibility for that in terms of if there's some damage out there that needs to be fixed, whether it's a washout or whatever?
Right. Well, and so part of what's required when we accept, um, anything other than zero or less post-development are easements for those downstream. So it's our road now, so the Jackson Lab property owner with the ponds on it made an agreement to accept everything from Darlings and these other lots and from the public road. But that does introduce complexity and responsibility when we're saying, oh, we're gonna add this other thing to the road that I guess was going there before, but maybe a little bit more. Um, so, I mean, I can continue to track down more information on what legal documentation is out there regarding what we agreed to like 15 years ago. Are the property owners where those ponds are gonna like that? I mean, we are still talking about a fairly small amount, um, but on principle.
So it sounds like it's gonna be, you know, if that were to occur, i.e. some sort of overflow or whatever, it's gonna be a can of worms, whichever way?
Yeah. And I, I, what I hear Jim saying, which makes perfect sense to me, is like, you can review this site, which is what he's had in mind, and see what that says, but the question remains, what is the overall capacity in the neighborhood in the road going into that pond on a private?
And a, and a peer review would, would look also at the parcel that's not yet developed? Um, in the sense that, you know, the original calculations took that into account, but the current ones didn't, I mean?
I don't know that a peer review would look at that, but the, that does introduce another wrinkle that, uh, a question I don't have an answer to, of like, if the lot next door was included in the site law application and then now, is there gonna be a change? Or is having abutting properties, like expanding that site law applicability, even though it's, I guess they don't expire, so it's been something like 15 years. But at what point does the state care?
Typically, a site law on those commercial developed lots does not cover, the stormwater will cover a certain percentage of the lots, um, on what the coverage was. If you look at the way storm, uh, site law is applied, they did a guesstimate of what the impervious areas would be on, on the lots and accommodated it into the detention basin. Um, I'm pretty sure that both Darlings and, and Jackson Lab and the former, um, Lowe's store there, uh, had their own site location law because of the amount of impervious they were covering and would have had to do some adjustments to, uh, that pond if need be needed, uh, at that point in time. So the, the site law doesn't necessarily say that, you know, this lot is running off so much water, it's just saying we're accounting for it in a certain amount of impervious area on that. When we get into development of that lot, um, we're gonna have to do, uh, what was suggested, do more research on that site law and come up with what that impervious area is, and we may have to do some adjustments onsite to accommodate that. But, uh, for this particular site, uh, we've accommodated, because it wasn't in the pond, we've accommodated that extra runoff onsite, with the exception of the, the base two-year storm having a very slight increase, um, which is permitted by exemption under DEP if it's requested under the stormwater law. And as noted, you know, the city does have a means to basically accommodate that. Uh, we think that there's appropriate easements with the stormwater pond downstream, whether we're a part of those or whether those are all under city control now, I, I, I'm, I don't know. On this lot, where, like I say, we've controlled the water leaving this lot, uh, with the exception of that very minor increase in the two-year storm.
In answer to your original question, I'm not, I don't have strong feelings either way in terms of getting a peer review. I mean, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I don't know that we'll necessarily learn a lot more. But, you know, if, if you are more comfortable or the rest of the board, I'm, I'm fine too.
I'd be more than happy to take input from the rest of the board.
Even from alternative one, alternate one.
You could also save, if you want to think about the rest of the site before you decide?
Sure.
I mean, just a suggestion.
So we can talk about other stuff then?
Sure.
Okay. So glad to see that you used the trip generation stuff correctly. Uh, but I have, I do have a question. You did, you used square footage of this, of the facility for the input parameter that generates the trips, and, and that was good. Uh, but there is another input parameter, alternative input parameter, which is the number of storage units, I believe, okay? And that's why I asked the question is, if you put in 225, uh, does that appreciably change the numbers you have?
I don't know, but if you look at the ways that, that analysis done and, and how the storage units are designed, there's a great variability in the number of storage units within the square footage of the building. Because you can have X number of smaller ones, you can have X number of larger ones.
Absolutely.
And in that analysis under the ITE, uh, there was no way to tell what the size of those storage units are, so we felt it more prudent to just use a square footage of the buildings themselves.
I'm not totally sure I agree with that, but I understand what you're saying. I guess I'd like to see something that basically just took a look at the 225 anyway and, and what are those numbers and do they make an appreciable difference? And they may well not.
Yeah, we can look at that.
There you go. Please and thank you.
I assume we can put that in when we come back for final.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Of course, I'm concerned, for sure.
I'm good. I have a question?
Can you explain the waiver request and the lighting requirement?
Well, the lighting is, uh, just a very low wattage lighting, building mount, fairly low level, uh, height mounting on it. Uh, and at 25 watts, you know, usually most site lighting are in the 100 watts, 100, 150, 200, uh, you know, it used to go up to 400 watts on area lights. Uh, and so with these downcast building lights that we've, uh, planned on using, that we put a touchy in the application with, we just didn't feel that those lower intensities really, uh, merited a, a lighting study. If the board agrees, uh, with that and waives it, then fine. If not, we will do the lighting study from that standpoint. Uh, we've already got that in the works, uh, currently, just in case the board did, uh, feel that you didn't want to set a precedent and, and require it from that standpoint, so.
Staff didn't believe that was sufficient justification?
The only thing written, um, was about the wattage, and if they're LED, that doesn't say that much to me about how bright it is. Cause 18 watts LED is something like 100 incandescent. So, um, and Jim, what's on your table? I printed it for you. So I figure if they can do a lighting plan, what's the point in waiving the requirement?
I think the data that could be useful is here. I mean, this, this sheet that he gave us, it gives you the lumens, which I think is what you're actually looking for, like how bright is it? And you can compare that to, like, some of these other legacy type lights that Jim's talking about. If it's just as bright, it's just as bright.
Yeah, well, so it's a matter of foot candles on the ground, um, and there is a little bit of ambiguity because active building entrances can be exempted. So we have standards for like a parking lot under a gas station canopy on a sidewalk, things like that. What is the area of a storage facility? Is that a parking lot? Does it need to be lit the same as the Walmart parking lot when you go at night? Maybe not, but active building entrance, to me, isn't necessarily everything that's intended here. I think of active building entrance, meaning you can make your front door of your apartment building as bright as it needs to be to be safe, right? So they're using building lighting as site lighting to some extent.
Well, how would the, the lighting that they propose kind of compare to Mr. Bates' storage units on 1A, and then the one before that was on, uh, Hagan's elbow? Hagan's elbow, I think, was a little different because it's in a residential area.
Yeah. I'll have to look back. I mean, the, the other one on Bangor Road was kind of weird too, because it was already a developed, somewhat developed site. I'll have to look.
These are this, just for reference, these are the same units that are on the Bangor Road, uh, facility?
Yeah, so this is the same developer as where the nursery?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking more of the one we just approved, uh, up in North. So basically, Jim, the lighting on this would be the same lighting as what's on, by the Union River Bridge?
Yeah, same everything, same layout, same light fixtures.
Did we grant a waiver on that one?
I didn't look that up. I'm not sure.
Do you, could the applicant recall, or, Jim, do you recall the planning board granted a waiver on the lighting for the?
Uh, I wasn't involved in that, but I'm not sure that they did. I think the, at the time, uh, Rich and his engineer had just submitted that in as part of the application. And I looked at it and looked at the wattage and the layout and, um, felt it wasn't really, uh, I think what the ordinance intended as far as when you look at site lighting involved in it. That the other facility did have one, um, That the other facility did have one whole mounted light that was out towards Bangor Road, so I think that had a little bit different characteristics than what we're proposing here, which is all the just building mounted wall pack lighting that casts enough light to provide the pavement areas with, with light, but really outside the pavement areas, there's really no light emission on those low level wattage.
So the, I'm sorry, go ahead. The entrance itself has no, no lighting, is that right?
No, it'd be just whatever's in the streetway.
And I just, I misspoke a little bit. The exempt lighting section talks about safety for like egress stairs and things like that. The phrase active building entrance is not the right phrase to use there. There are actually illumination standards for active building entrances. Just to correct myself.
Is this going to be open 24/7 or is it going to fall into standard hours of operations?
Would be.
10:00?
Yeah, hours of operation, 10:00 PM, 6:00 AM.
But it's, but it's open access in egress, right?
Correct.
So if someone comes at midnight?
No, no, no. There would be keypad access.
Oh, okay. So there is, so there is some sort of gate at the entrance?
Yeah. You have to be attentive to get into the building through keypad secure access and then of course we have all fire and safety stuff that they can leave if they need to in a emergency by 10.
There's, there's not a gate at the entrance, it's all building, as Rich was saying, it's all keypad at the buildings.
Oh, okay.
At, at each entrance.
Okay.
Of the building.
Of the building, okay.
Correct.
I was saying about the entrance off the street.
Nope, that's all open.
That's all just open 24/7?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what about the last, the traditional building with presumably, you know, external gates like we're used to seeing?
This wouldn't be a, a secure entrance site. It would just be secured to the building and that's it. So there would, there would be no access gates or access points, it would be free to enter.
Would we expect to see more lighting around that traditional structure than the ones that have just like the main entrance?
It would be normal, it would be similar to the, you know, a couple of lights on the front of the building as usual in this place. Enough to, to warrant, you know, secure, security as well as access for tenants. Like I said, it would be the exact same lighting pattern for the project that was on.
I'm just kind of curious from the, from a security standpoint, not that the ordinance requires it, but, and so, so anybody that is renting a unit can go in. I mean, what type of security, let's say they decide to go into somebody else's unit, you know, what type of information would you be able to provide to the police department?
Well, we have a fully integrated and monitored security sys, security camera system and the design of the building is such that it's extremely hard to get into another person's unit if you're in that building. But we have secure law, uh, security logs too. We know everybody that's coming and going, the times that they've come, when they've left, things of that nature. So we should be able to pinpoint if anybody goes in there and a couple of the security cameras and you have to be a tenant to get into the building, so, to have a valid code.
I mean, maybe we staff look at how we handled the lighting plan for the, for the current storage units and go the same way for these storage units, I would, I would suggest.
I, I can look it up.
And we should be consistent.
I guess.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, procedurally, like I can look that up and let's see. If you have, if you did waive it in the past and you're inclined to waive it again here, then you could make that decision later. We could kind of assume that you're going to make the decision.
Yeah. And just to let you know, we're fine if you want to work with, we can work with staff until final and we can have a bet, you know, have more information for you at final if that's okay with the board too.
It's comforting.
It's, I, I think there's, there's a lot of value in being consistent, but I think we also have a case example here, not to sign Lori up for more work, but we have an example. I, I wonder if we just drove by and looked at that one, would you consider it sufficiently lit, which I think would inform a decision, would we grant the same waiver again for the exact same plan?
Yep, I could do that, not a problem.
I'll check that out tonight going home.
There you go.
Sign Jonathan.
Well, that's a question, as a fire guy, in terms of access to these buildings and getting around the buildings and whatever it is that y'all have to worry about, are you happy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? And I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody out in the audience or online have a comment or question about this project? Please come to the podium or let Kerry know on Zoom. Apparently you don't have anybody. And I'll close the public hearing. And what is for wishing the board?
What's the status of the critical natural areas and natural register of historic places submissions?
They don't want to ask those agencies for comment.
Is that not a requirement?
It is a requirement.
We just felt in an urban area that that wasn't going to be a significant concern to staff or the board, knowing that the comments that are in the TRT report is, I don't have a problem on getting those for final.
Well, they're, I mean, they're a requirement of the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I guess in theory, like, like other things we've discussed, you could request a waiver based on X reason, but particularly with the National Register of Historic Places and then even critical natural areas, like downhill behind Jaxx, like there's a lot of woods there and just because something may have been reviewed in the past doesn't mean that new resources haven't been identified, so.
You have to keep in mind though, the agencies are only reviewing for this site. They don't broad spread over, they make you, like the natural areas program may give you information as to what's in the greater Ellsworth area as far as concerns, but they're looking at the site we've asked them to look at in this particular site in itself. It didn't have wetlands, it didn't have any other significant feature that they, wetland scientists had looked at. And the agency, Natural Areas Agency is, is, really just focuses on that site from that standpoint. So you need to keep that in mind on it and the, and the same with the historic preservation. They're just like, they look a little bit outside the site, but really they have potential for just impacts created by the site development itself from that standpoint. So with this being a vacant lot, you wouldn't think they would have an issue with the whole area being developed and around it already. You wouldn't think the natural areas would have too much of an issue. So with that, that's kind of why we didn't necessarily go forward. But again, I don't want to put the board in a situation where they're, they're doing something and setting a precedent. So if that is deemed to be important or required, we'll make sure we get those letters back from those agencies.
Is that a relatively, for you, timing wise and money wise, that's a relatively low impact ask, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we would provide a waiver, even considering the logic that you're providing. You know, I don't want to set a precedent where we start waiving those requirements for other sites. That's my thing.
I concur, actually.
I guess you've got your direction, Jim.
And just to confirm, the fire guy said he was good, does that address?
That's your title now.
Does that address, you know, the concern here that the fire suppression information is incomplete? Has that been updated?
So we've talked and what that is, is that we're waiting, the numbering of the building and other stuff like that, they're working on how they want to lay that out and they're going to get with myself and the deputy chief and then we're going to go over and sit there and tell them, you know, whether that works or not. I didn't feel comfortable having them do like three different prints just for time, time consume.
So we're asking for final review?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That place.
What's that?
Tom.
Yeah.
Oh, he's the fire guy. There's no other name.
Inspector Fire Guy.
Should we come back to the question of the peer review and stormwater?
Yeah, we need to resolve that.
So I, I think I, I raised it originally, so I, I will say, based, based on what Elena had to say and I, I didn't realize that it was overbuilt for the area as opposed to like a specific pond for one, for one lot. I am more comfortable with that explanation. I, I don't think we have all the mathematical answers, you know, to the nth degree, but the fact that it's built for the area and not a specific lot. Had I, had I known that previously, I probably wouldn't have given it to you.
And it is, as you pointed out a couple of times, it is a relatively small piece of this overall puzzle in this, in the area.
Correct.
Right?
Correct, yes.
So is that your answer?
Well, I'd like to hear from the whole board.
I'm good with it.
With having a peer review or not?
No peer review.
Nope.
I'm curious about the process of a peer review, but I'm not sure it's necessary for this project.
That sounds like a sidebar, right?
Sidebar, yeah.
So I guess we're not going to do a peer review.
Well, it just, I, I know that that detention pond was built to a very high standard and it was built to accommodate all of that real estate. So we can do the peer review, but it seems like it's already a settled case. Just an opinion.
I do find it inter, I'll just state this conversationally, I find it interesting that this lot was not inclu, like, I don't understand why this lot was not included.
Because, well, the lot already existed before that subdivision and all those plans that required this, it was just kind of like the way that development evolved there and it was probably in different ownership as well.
My layman's perspective is I don't think the rain cares if it was previously subdivided or not, right? The water's going to flow.
I think there was actually two separate subdivisions involved with that area and that's partly why this lot was in one subdivision and the other lot that Rich owns was in the subdivision that included Lowe's and Darlings and Duncan Facility. So those lots in that side of the, that area of Kingsland Crossing were part of that subdivision which required the site location permit. And then the other subdivision was more of land, kind of more closer to Beethland. So I think that's part of the reason, two different developers and two different sized developments.
Just for the record too, I think we should look at the, maybe the lighting ordinances and if they're based on watts previously, maybe they should be based on lumens in the future, just because of the technology change. Wattage is not a good way to really judge it anymore.
I don't think they're based on watts at all.
Not, okay.
They're based on foot candles.
Okay. Then maybe the other side of that is then when we get these sorts of attestations from the manufacturers, they should maybe provide some alternative data that actually aligns with the ordinance.
Yeah.
And they're giving us two different metrics, neither of which we use in the ordinance, so.
Well, so that's why I think, I mean, we kind of came to the decision to look at whether the similar development, whether the board waived the requirement for a lighting plan, but getting a lighting plan from the applicant gives you those little numbers to compare to the standards, so. But light is a really tricky thing to conceptualize.
So I think this is a great opportunity because in this case, we can actually go look at one that is settled.
Yeah.
We don't normally have that opportunity, so.
I'm not allowed that out after dark, though, so.
Some.
We all set?
If somebody wants to make a motion?
I can make a motion. I'll find that the, the planning board finds a preliminary plan review for a major used site development type of Walmart Kingsland self-story for Walmart Commercial Ellsworth LLC, the application is complete.
There's a second.
I would, I think we need to have the caveat that the, the critical natural areas and natural registry of historic places letters be submitted in order, you know, conditioned on those submissions for a review.
Well, they really need it in the motion, seeing as it's already required, correct?
Well, then technically it's incomplete.
Right. So maybe complete with the exception.
But, but they've addressed it at least, right?
No, we don't have that.
No, no, but he, but he, he, and I don't remember, but didn't he have some information in the application about that and why he didn't? So the point is that the application is sort of complete, but it needs to be clarified and resolved. I mean, I don't know.
I think that, I think the information in the application was intended to inspire you to find it not applicable.
I'm sure that was it.
If we found that it is applicable, which it is, then the idea is that, well, the board is often allowed just evidence that the request has been made to those agencies to suffice. But really the idea is that you have the response so that you have the information so that you can digest the information at this meeting and over the next month before you make a final decision as to whether those resources are impacted.
So the answer to his question is yes.
Whatever Patrick said, it's yes, yeah.
Then it's incomplete, right?
But, or not, but I think there's a compromise.
We can dance on it and say we find it complete conditioned upon submission of those two reports from the state agencies for our hearing on, you know, whether or not to approve it. If it's not, if we don't have it, then we can't approve it, you know, we might have to table it so if they can get it in by the next meeting and time for us to review it, that satisfies my concerns.
Rich, you read that through your motion?
Yeah, right. What do you say?
Yeah, I think it's just, we could deem it.
It's conditional on this thing.
Conditioned upon, you know, submission of the critical natural areas and natural registry, register of historic places, you know, reports and we have to adjust the lighting, how do we want to work the lighting consideration, if at all? Is there a refinding of the lighting submission, complete, conditioned upon evidence of prior, prior waiver being granted?
Yeah, that's an interesting one because we, we don't actually know what was done, so it's.
Or in the alternative lighting plan, if a waiver wasn't granted, I think we decide we want a lighting plan to review, correct?
I'll do the, the lighting, I mean, he actually presented a lighting plan, does that meet the requirements of the ordinance?
I haven't reviewed it to see whether it meets the standards, so that was emailed yesterday, I think, and so I just printed it for you guys.
Right.
So I would be, I would be inclined to just say it's required.
So if we have a lighting plan, we don't know if it satisfies the requirements of the ordinance?
Yeah, I haven't gone to that level of looking at it.
But we're on pleness review, so as far as we're concerned, we've received a lighting plan.
That's obvious, yeah, right, right?
Yes, I mean.
Actually, Patrick is under that pile.
Right, this, this is, this is not a judgment on the merit.
Yeah, no, I know. My question, is this a lighting plan?
Yeah, is it here?
No.
It is, so.
This is a lighting plan.
The weird part about it is that the applicant preferred to have a conversation about a waiver, but I received the plan, so I gave you the plan because it doesn't make any sense to me to pretend it doesn't exist.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what this means.
If you want, if you want to consider that plan as part of the application, it was just submitted late in the last minute so that Elena knew that we were in process on it. If you'd like to consider that part of the application, that's great, we'll work out the final details of that, whether it has all the information that's required on that, that's fine. If you want to accept that as part of the application, we'll withdraw the waiver request.
I think that's the better.
Yeah, that's cleaner. And then it's on them to get us to make it so we understand. So then I think we're just, the motion would be to deem a complete subject to submission of a two state agency report.
Do you understand all our changes? Kerry?
That's because she's good.
Is there a second?
A second.
All of them pay up?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, board members.
Item number four, preliminary plan review for a major use site development entitled A and B LLC for Aaron Wisbrough. The proposal is to construct a 1,500, 1,512 square foot automated car wash building on a 0.66 acre parcel. Tax map, 135, lots 13 and 14, and tax map, 134, lot 150, located at 59 and 61 High Street and 62 Dean Street. The subject property is located in the downtown zone district. Here's someone representing the applicant.
Andrew McCullough representing the applicant, and I believe the applicant is, himself is joining us on Zoom.
I am on here, too.
Okay. So as, as stated, the proposed plan is to construct a two bay fully automated car wash. The building dimensions proposed are 36 by 42. Uh, it is in the downtown zone. Our plan includes assigned location, lighting, grading, drainage, landscaping, and a plan for utilities. We, we will be connecting to city water, city sewer, and the city's storm drain system. We have developed a plan that reduces peak flows after development to less than pre-development peak flows. The grade at the entrance to the site is just about 5% as you drive into the site, and just for perspective, that is less than the grade of the, of Dean Street in that vicinity.
I'm sorry, so that's from the, from the curve of the street up onto the site?
Yes, yes. We are requesting a waiver to utilize a fence as the landscaping buffer treatment between the site and the adjacent residential properties. We have incorporated a planted buffer along the High Street frontage. It is set back from High Street with the goal to have the vegetation where the impact from salt sand will be minimized. The operation is planned for 24-hour per day operation, and in discussion with the applicant, uh, and this is just information I received yesterday, so there's nothing in your packet about this. The noise, 1.4 meters off the floor inside the car wash is 94 decibels. The noise ordinance has a requirement of 90 decibels for less than 30 minutes. Um, so I found a sound level calculator today on, um, the internet, and because sound does not travel or, it does not function in a linear manner. And so just for perspective, I ran the sound at five meters or approximately 16 feet from the sound or from the noise generator, and the sound level there is 83 decibels. And that is not factoring in any noise attenuation by the building itself. So I, I believe that it will function in a manner that meets the ordinance, meets the noise.
Can I chime in on that real quick?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. That, that's also assuming the doors are wide open while the dryers are gone, which with the automated function, we can make sure that the doors are closed while that function is operating, which would obviously contain all that sound inside the bays versus going out into the public.
Just a couple other things to highlight before we get into discussion, if you will. The sidewalk on Dean Street is not in, in the vicinity of these lots, is not in great shape, mainly because there are wide entrances there to the residential as well as commercial, previous commercial, um, building. And so our plan is to reconstruct that sidewalk per the original intent of the plans while closing up the entrances that were originally there. And we do have short retaining walls on what would be the easterly end where there's a transition in grade, and those retaining walls, and I did check this this afternoon to verify it, they're approximately 24 inches high. So there's approximately a 24-inch transition down from the sidewalk down into the site in those, at the corner where you see the radiuses in the pavement. Um, but, and that retaining wall is approximately two feet off the side, the edge of the sidewalk. So there's like a two-foot space there, and then a 24-inch separation, or 24-inch vertical transition. Um, I don't believe that's, or I, I believe it's less than the sidewalk that we have out here on Church Street in front of the, um, City Hall, or in front of the Congregational Church. So, um, we did, we do have a lighting plan, um, included, and as you can see on these 11 by 17s, we separated out the, the overall site plan into four different sheets. Um, they're all labeled SP2 right now, because we worked on these yesterday, but, um, so there's one plan that has the grading and the erosion control, there's a plan that has, and the drainage, there's a plan that has the utilities, there is a plan that has the site layout showing dimensions, and there's a plan showing the, um, the lighting plan.
Just as a question and clarification, with that lighting plan that you just talked about?
Yes.
There's little concentric circles, sort of?
Yes.
Uh, I assume that beyond that, the last one, it's dark.
Zero, correct. The, the most outer rim on tho-, on each of those, and I did check this this afternoon, is .25 foot candles. So that's, and that's before it reaches the property.
Right.
Yes. The, the highest, and, and it's, it's a, in the lighting plan, and I will say, it's hard, whether it's a storage facility or whether it's a facility like this, to say, okay, exactly which standard does this fit into. Um, I looked at, I looked at parking lots as being the most typical or the best one to try to hit, hit for this. Um, so my, my maximum lighting intensity on the site is three-foot candles, or 3.1, um, and then it tapers out from there down. Um, and in the standard, the average maximum at any point is two, um, maximum at any point is 10. So I'm not exactly sure where that, how you end up in between the two and the 10, but I have a maximum of three or 3.1. And I didn't put a fixture on the northerly side of the building either, just so that we weren't potentially creating an issue.
And that's the side that the existing house is on, right away from the.
Correct, correct. The tanker house.
Andrew, before we get to too many questions?
Yes.
I wouldn't mind if you could produce another site plan, like on the SP5, you also included kind of ingress, egress, you had the cars on there.
Yes.
If we could have another one of these.
Yeah, no, I can, right.
As little.
Yep, turn off as much of the rest and just show the vehicle, the stacking. Yes, I can do that. I just, I was going, trying to go fast yesterday to get as much information, and I, I blanked on that. Yep.
And perhaps a little more explanation of, in reading the, the application, there's two different types of machines.
Yes.
Maybe somebody could explain a little bit more, and which machine is located and which side of the building?
Sure. Aaron, can you talk about the two different bays?
Just the difference, just the difference between the machine or?
Yeah.
Well, I think in your application, you thought that, and I can't remember which one would have more cars using one type versus, you know, no-touch versus soft touch.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. So, so the difference between the two machines is, is one of them is, is basically a touch-free unit, which, just like it says, it doesn't touch the car. It, um, it's high-pressure water, uh, and you have an arm that goes around the car. I'm assuming all of you have probably been through one of those. It's very standard automated machine, uses more water than the other machine that I call the tandem or the soft touch, which is a friction machine, it has neoprene, um, brush, brushes, doesn't hold dirt or anything like that, but it actually touches your car, uses less water, because you're actually using friction to clean the car versus the high pressure of not touching the car, if that makes sense. Um, we found that in our existing sites, people tend to use the soft touch versus the touch-free, because it, because of the friction, it cleans your car better, does a better job. But there's still people that just don't want anything touching their car, so that's why obviously we offer the touch-free, and still, you know, do a fair amount with the touch-free, but the soft touch tends to, uh, we tend to have higher numbers in the, in that bay. And it doesn't, there's no relevance to if it's in the left bay or the right bay, it's, it's all, it's all, we can set it up in either bay, it doesn't matter, it's, it's not, uh, it doesn't have to be in one of the certain bays that were, were, um, that were shown on the plan. So we can put it in the right bay if you want it in the right bay, we can put it in the left bay if you want it in the left bay, it doesn't matter. Um, it's just that we found that people tend to gravitate towards that machine versus the touch-free machine more.
Well, the reason I ask, the reason I ask, Aaron, is that, I mean, the lot is, as you drive in, is somewhat restricted to the amount of space you have as cars pull in there, and it, it looks like it could very easily end up with a bottleneck, I mean, depending on if, which wash bay is, is more people going to. I mean, you have a limited number of, of space there for cars to, to come in off Dean Street, go around to the right, and then kind of make a hard left turn to get in, into the building itself. So you may, you know, depending on which bay.
I'm sorry, just to answer that question, the, basically, what's gonna happen is if we have a busy wash day after a storm, okay, yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a bunch of people in there, and they're gonna go in, and they're gonna be like, I really like the soft touch machine, so that's the one I want to wait for. But if there's three cars ahead of them, they're gonna, they're gonna go to the, they're gonna go to the touch-free and get a wash. They're, they're not gonna, I mean, I would say, some people will, but the majority of the people are just gonna go in and they're gonna go to the touch-free and get, and get that wash, if they can get in that one fast. And are we gonna have days that we, we bottleneck? Potentially, but it's only gonna be those days that are immediately after a storm or something like that. These automated sites don't, they're not like a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks or something like that, that every morning somebody's going to get their wash, and you're gonna have that morning heat rush or something like that. You're gonna get a Saturday afternoon that everybody wants to wash their car, because it's nice out and there was a storm the day before or something like that. So the, the days that we're going to stack, per se, are gonna be few and far between over the course of the, the year. And even on those days, I, I gotta look, but I would say we're probably stacking in that site, we're gonna, we're gonna stack at least a dozen cars before we hit the street. Because you got two lanes coming off the building, wraps back around out to, uh, to Dean Street. So I don't, Andrew, you can probably speak to that. Have you done a, um, a stacking?
I did a stacking with essentially one lane, and I had nine vehicles. I think it's either nine or 10 on the thing.
Nine or 10, and that's including, um,
That was just with one lane.
double stack at the building, or?
I'm sorry?
Does that include a double stack at the building? Because you got two, you got two lanes?
Yeah. Yeah, you had, you had, you had
Yeah.
two cars in the, in the units, then you had two cars that were just outside.
Right.
And then I believe it went to one, one queue.
So I had nine outside, yeah.
Eleven.
So, but since you're, since you're on this, though, uh, you know, so basically, it's a, it's a, a single queue up to a certain point, and then there are two servers. Um, you know, I heard you kind of say, I think, that, you know, you get up there and you can choose which one you want to go to, but that's at the very last moment. Um, is that a good way to operate it? I mean, I, because I can imagine that, you know, someone being in line the whole time wanting to go to this one, and that one actually being empty, uh, because everyone else is going to the, the other server. I mean, what happens then? I mean, it seems like a very, very tight space, because typically for McDonald's or something like that, you, you want to allow for, and again, it's obviously different use, but you want to allow for roughly 10 cars or whatever. But, you know, we see a lot of, I mean, the real problem is if that puppy comes out and spills onto the street, you know, that's, that's when it's a problem. If it's stacked on site and never comes off site, that's your problem.
This is what I think of.
But when it comes out onto the street, that's our problem.
Yeah. I think of that as the Chick-fil-A effect, anybody that's ever been to the Bangor mall, and it's terrible. Not that it'll happen here.
Do we have room to put in a, uh, two-lane to the building, Andrew, like at our entrance?
Andrew, do you have like SP5 plan with you, site plan, the big one?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I think what we're all getting at is that, okay, those three cars that are going into the southernmost bay, if you have three cars lined up waiting to get into that bay on the left, you're blocking everyone behind them from getting to the northern bay, and you're stacking out into. And you're stacking out into Dean Street. And in my mind, that is totally unacceptable. I mean, I think the traffic flow from here leaves a lot to be divided.
We could... We have the room so that we could push this slope back toward High Street so that there could be two rows right there. I mean, even if we pushed it back 10 feet, so that there would be room for two cars to maneuver. The cars going into the first bay, and then the cars going into the second bay. And, and then if, if somebody, and then this was in a conversation with Elena that I, I mean, I thought it was good input. And, you know, if we had somebody that decided that they were opting out, period, we do, right now, we have an aisle down the north side of the building so that somebody can pass by and leave.
Maybe I can try to ask the question in a different way. Looking at the map here, so the ingress is on the east side. The egress is on the west side. And on the east side of the structure, you have 40 feet. And on the west side of the structure, the egress, you have 60 feet. But the queuing is happening on the east side. So can I ask why the ingress is smaller than the egress?
Well, my, my thought process in the design is I wanted to allow space for cars to pull down and vacuum and still have the 40 feet.
Okay, so other activities on the west side?
So, yeah, way down on the, yeah, near the edge of pavement, we've got three proposed vacuums. And so that was my, plus and minus.
How loud are those vacuums? Do we have any sounds?
Sorry?
How loud are the vacuums?
Um, I would give you a decimal. I'd have to look at the brochure, I'm not hurt.
And my one sound, so it was 94 decibels in the unit when it's operating? And then what was your calculation, Andrew? Were you talking about at the property line?
No, I, that was just at 16 feet away from the generation of the noise.
Where is the noise being gen, or what is that? The center of the building?
Yes. So, so, I mean, at the edge of the building, right? And this was if the door were open, if you will, the edge of the building, it would be 83.
Do we know what it is at the property line?
No, I can calculate it, but no, I did not calculate it today. I, my goal was just to show that it was dropping below the required noise levels. But we can calculate it at the property line, yes.
Can that also be incorporated? I think, I'd like to see with these vacuums, the sound they make.
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking if this is a, you're proposing a 24-hour car wash with 24-hour lighting, I could come in at 3:00 in the morning, wash my car, and then pull up and run the vacuum. And that's, and you've got houses all around it.
There is a, and this is an option. If 24 hours is an issue because it's automated, we can set a time that's dictated for it to shut, shut down so nobody can go through it. So just something to think about, you know, if it's, okay, we don't want people going in after midnight or whatever. We can, we can close the doors and close it down.
What, what's the limit on that? You seem flexible. How flexible? In other words, you know, you close it down at 8, 9, 10, 11, midnight? Any of those?
Yeah, no, I mean, we, you know, we don't, we don't do a lot. I mean, I don't know what the traffic's like, like out there at 10 o'clock at night, but I mean, I can't imagine it's very, it's very busy.
The sidewalks basically roll over at 9.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, if we did like the, you know, I'd like it to be open at 7, you know, like at 7 to 10 or something like that. I mean, that's, yeah, that's, I have no problem with that.
Mr. Wizwell, you said that the building itself, when a car is being washed, both doors could be closed? Is that what you said?
Correct, yeah. So don't, so again, those same thing, those are, those are, we have settings. We can set them how we wanna set them. So like in the wintertime, they're set by temperature, stuff like that. But if we want it to be, the doors always shut during a wash, we can do that. Like in the summertime, typically, we leave it open just for moisture, stuff like that. But if they need to be closed, they can be closed. They can be closed when it's not operating, and then they open when it's time for a car to go in. They can be open, you know, all the time. They can close when the car's being washed. We have a lot of functionality when it comes to that stuff. We can close one door on the, you know, the exit side while the car's being washed and leave the back one open. So there's a lot of different options there depending on what, what we're trying to achieve.
I mean, what I, what I would wanna achieve is, is to reduce the noise as much as possible to the neighborhood.
Okay.
So if the doors could be closed, you know, and, you know, that would probably reduce the decibel level. I would imagine the neighbors will appreciate that a lot.
Yeah.
And I think we talked about the vacuums. That is right over next to one of the neighbors, very close to one of the neighbor's houses. So I think, I think noise on the whole property may very well be an issue with the, with the neighbors.
I'm trying to look at the decimal right now.
Yeah.
So I can give you an answer, but I'm just trying to find the equivalent. Yeah, so, so the, the doors, that's, that's no problem. We can, we can close the, the exit door while it's drying so that none of that noise goes out towards the neighbors, for sure.
I mean, just to give you and Andrew an idea, I happened to be out on High Street yesterday and today going to work, and it seemed to be a good day to wash your car. And as I'm driving by, Mr. Harmon, he happens to be in the, in the, in the audience. You know, I kind of looked in to, to see how many cars he had lined up, you know, going into his facility. He has two bays, automatic bays, and then he has some other wash bays. But, and yesterday and today, the most, from driving down the road, it looked like besides the two cars in the two bays, there was at least six cars waiting to get in. So I'm just...
Combined or separately?
Six cars in each lane. So, yeah. So, and it may have been more than that. And this was just, you know, driving by High Street, you know, two different times. And as far as the cars going out on Dean Street, I also happened to be down on 202 in Manchester today, or yesterday, and there's a car washed down there that happened to be bleeding out onto 202 on a state road. You know, Dean Street is not a state road, but I don't wanna see any cars lined up on Dean Street waiting to go into your facility.
Yeah, understandable, yeah.
So along those lines, I guess the question is, is there enough space, for example? Because part of the solution to that is to have the, have double queues as far back as you can, right?
Right.
If there's enough space, but that's a space issue relative to where the buildings go. And I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it, it's, it's... I, I, I think based on, and I mean, I use, you know, a typical passenger car turning radius, et cetera, when those lanes is out, so that they could turn and make it into the closest or the southerly bay. And then, of course, the turning radius isn't as hard into the northerly bay. The... I think the answer to two queues is more area toward High Street so that then on one lane, they could turn into the first bay. I mean, I'll have to lay on the template to see. But that's, that's my thought. I might have to adjust... I mean, I have an 11-foot lane right now on the north, north side of the building, around the building. I, I might have to adjust, slide the building just a little bit just to make sure that I can have that radius into the first bay and, and get two queues there.
And if you were to decrease the 11-foot lane that's on the north side of the building, how does that affect the, the fire guy and his fire trucks and whatnot?
He's shaking his head.
No, no, no impact?
No.
Because we're gonna fight the fire from the three, from the other three sides. We're not gonna put ourselves between...
So you're not gonna take that fire truck around that side of the building?
What's that?
Not gonna take the fire truck around that side of, okay.
No, we're not gonna put ourselves between that and another building.
That makes sense, but I'm not a fire guy.
Now, Andrew, on, on the templates that you plan on using, I noticed the vehicles here, you have them roughly 15 feet long, which I'm guessing using as an average. But I happened to, when I was reviewing this, I decided, well, how long are my vehicles? And so I went out in the dooryard last night and measured my vehicles. Some are shorter, some are longer. I have a Ram pickup. My Counting Hitch is 19 feet long. It's the same thing as a Chevy GMC, I don't know, that Ford. So, you know, in, in doing this, you know, worst-case scenario, you know, I think you should be using worst-case scenario. The biggest, not that a Ram 1500 is a big vehicle, but in a lot this small, I think every foot helps. Another thing, if you're pushing the pavement over to that slope, I know some of that area you're using for snow storage. You know, you have to take that into mind if you gotta put it someplace else.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think that, I mean, I think that the... where, if we can provide two queues, even if we use a worst-case scenario, a 19-foot vehicle, which, I mean, it would be a mix of vehicles. Some would be 15, some would be 19. If we use, you know, a mix of vehicles, I mean, even the way I've shown it, I've got 11. If we provide a second aisle there with another six vehicles, even if we take a couple out, so we're at, you know, probably 14. And, and I mean, I've got, you know, I allowed for about four to five feet of space between each vehicle. So I, I think that, you know, I think that's probably where we end up. Probably around 14.
So, but, but the bottom line there is that you need to see, we need to see a modified site plan
Yes.
that would be clear
Yeah.
about the assumptions and length and stuff like that. And I, and I, I mean, I, I think it's kind of cool the way you did it, okay? But I think it has to be a little more precise than, and from looks of it, you need more space to get those guys around. So those would be my suggestions for margin orders.
I'm curious, I'm gonna go back to, yeah, my Chick-fil-A effect. So is there signage or what? I mean, sooner or later, it would overflow. You know, all the best-laid plans, right? Is there signage or something that the city can do? I always wonder this in Bangor, like, why does nobody stop this from happening? So is there signage or something that can be put up to say, "Look, if it's full, drive on. Now is not your time."
I think that would work about as good as a speed warning sign.
Well, no sign definitely doesn't work at all, which is what's going on in Chick-fil-A. So is there at least anything that we can attempt?
Well, what you're, what you're saying is that they'll, they'll visually see that they can't get in, and that you're putting a sign up that says they can't get in.
Maybe they'll feel bad about it.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, that's...
Yeah, I mean, I would, I don't know. My gut feeling is that if they saw that it was full, that they would then go to another, I mean...
Well, I, I would disagree. I think they're gonna be queued right up on Dean Street because Dean Street is a pretty quiet street when you get right down to it. And it's, it's not like backing out of the High Street where you say, wow, I'm on High Street, and if I leave it, stay out here, I'm gonna get hit or whatever.
Andrew, if people are gonna stop and basically park on Route 202 of 4, well, actually 5 Lane Highway, they're gonna stop and park on Dean Street.
I'm not going to. I don't have that...
It's gonna be a very special person.
I don't have that time available. So if I, if I go to the car wash and there's more than five cars, I'm out of there.
Depends whether they have a free ticket or not.
But to your question, I have seen like no stacking beyond this point signs. The importance of it, of it is a challenge.
And there's no one, there's no one working here, right? It's all automated.
Right.
Is, is anyone ever on-site, Mr. Wizwell?
Uh, yes, there is, yeah. So I mean, on busy days like that, we'll probably have an attendant just making sure that the flow is good and there's no issues because the wash is operating, you know, one after the other. And then we have to be there, you know, daily to maintain. So we'll be there daily maintaining trash, cleaning the yard, chemicals, all that stuff.
Start to finish.
But, but we don't have like a set like, you know, eight to five, somebody's gonna be there.
What, what, were you done with your answer?
Yeah, yeah.
What, what do you suppose a traffic flow into and out of this is gonna look like? I mean, I get the idea that you're on High Street, and you make a left turn in, which is a terrible thing, or a right turn in, which is not such a terrible thing. But the point is, you come in, you get your car washed, come back out, and you're on Dean Street. What happens then to the, to the, to the cars? I mean, do a whole bunch more people come up Dean to, to High Street and try to turn left? Or do they filter through the neighborhood to get out some other way? Or what?
My, my gut feeling is if, if they're residents, if they're locals, it's probably gonna be a pretty uniform split up to, up to High Street or down to Water Street. That, that's my feeling. The... I believe there's no, I mean, you're right. I mean, I know, I see people take left turns. I believe there's no left turn on...
There's no sign.
There's no sign there.
The only side street that has no left turn is Foster. Coming onto High Street.
Coming onto High Street.
And there's, and there's some restriction with the Shell station when you come down to the street. I mean, you could, you could go out the regular Shell station things and turn left, which, again, I think is a foolish thing, but, but if you go out the little side street, you can, you only can turn left.
You can only turn left, right.
You can't turn right back out the high.
Correct.
But, but the, my, you know, my problem with High Street is that there's too many left turns. And I don't know what we can do in terms of requiring somebody that, well, in terms of saying at the end of Dean Street, you can't turn left.
We could do that.
Well, I'd love to see that.
But would it be the city or would it be the operation? It would be the operation, wouldn't it?
Well, if it's just a matter of a sign,
Yeah.
that's not too difficult.
Well, that's the kind of thing that developers often will kick in, shall we say. So I guess, I guess, I guess the bottom line is that relative to the traffic and so forth, the queuing, the traffic, in and out and all that, I'd like to see that more refined, you know, because from what I know, and I don't know a lot about operating car washes, you know, whatever, but, you know, but, but in general, Saturday is the worst day, or, well, worst day for traffic, best day for business, right? And, you know, so that becomes a, you know, like, what happens to the traffic? Is it gonna be different on Saturday than on other days? Whatever. So I'd just like to see a little more attention kicked, played all that so we can make a more informed decision personally.
I, I will say that, I mean, when I looked at traffic, and I looked at both the numbers on Water Street, because, because in, in my mind, and I guess I didn't articulate this, in my mind, I was under the thought process that it would be a 50/50.
People do go down towards Water versus up towards High.
Correct, right. And so I looked at the number of vehicles that would be at the Water Street intersection and the number of vehicles that would be at the High Street intersection. And during a, and looked at the differences in volume versus what was on, what is on Dean Street, what we would anticipate on Dean Street for an increase. And it was, you know, if we, if we said... you know, if, if we said seven vehicles, I, I think it was somewhere around seven vehicles that eat in, each intersection during the peak hour.
If they're, if they're evenly split. I guess, I guess the question comes also in terms of, and I have no idea what the answer to this question is. But in terms of a, a location like this, are these trips that are, you know, drivers are just passing by saying, hey, my car's dirty, I need to wash it and, and, and just duck in? Which case it's a right turn off of High Street and a right turn back on to High Street. And that's not so problematic, okay? If it's a, they're going the other way on High Street, then it's a left turn off of High Street and a left back on to High Street, which is, which is a terrible pair of, pair of movements. Now, you know, if they're all local, in other words, the, the car wash becomes a destination as opposed to just a pass by thing, then, you know, then it's a different scenario, right? Because they may be coming up Dean as opposed to, uh, or be willing to go down Dean into the neighborhoods, which is good and bad too.
I mean, shouldn't we have that information as part of the application? I mean, obviously, we don't have a, have to do a DOT traffic movement permit, but we should have some information as to where the cars are coming from and where they're going.
And it's the best guess, and we get that.
And how many they're gonna be in. I know in here, there was a total figure for how many cars were gonna go to
I, I believe.
One wash bay versus the other, but no information as to where they're coming from and where they're going to.
And I, and I would, I admit that it, it's pretty subjective because the, the typical guidelines from ITE that tell you how many trips get generated and so forth, there's a, there's a real positive of, of studies about car washes. And so you can't really depend very much on their models necessarily.
No, that's correct.
But, but it's another point of input though.
Okay. No, we can, we can look at that harder. Um, I think I did, um, I did try because there is not a lot of information from IT, in ITE regarding this. I looked at some studies for what are typically, what I would say are larger facilities, larger areas. But I took the percentages that they were using for peak hour versus total trips per day. And I think I gave you some peak hour numbers.
You did.
Based on those percentages. So I tried to work my way backwards to, to that piece of data. As far as whether they're destination or pass by, I'll have to do some research to tell you that.
And I would re, and I would just double, I'm sorry, I would just double check the, uh, the total generation and peak hour generation. Because I think some of the stuff you looked at, I think, was for, um, well, first of all, it's peak hour of the generator, which is really the issue in this case, okay? Not peak hour on the streets. Uh, and the other thing is that, uh, the Saturday versus other days. You know, normally we look at A and PM rush hour and blah, 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 and off we go. And that's not so much the case with these kinds of facilities, I don't think. Sorry.
No, no, no problem. Bill, so I just wanna speak to your, your drive by or destination. So, so typically, these are a destination, they're not a drive by. People driving to work are not gonna say, oh, there's a car wash, I'm gonna go pull it, unless, you know, they've been wanting to get one for three days and they just. Ninety percent of the time, it's, somebody says, I need to wash my car. And they either are familiar with the facility, they know where they wanna go, then they go and do it. So to that point, it's, it's, there's, there's not as many people just driving by and swinging in as there are people making a commitment to drive there and wash their car.
So, so that, that has an impact then on which way they turn to come in and how, you know, so for example, if it's a drive by, they, they, they come in, make a right turn, make a right turn back out. That's a drive by. Uh, a, a trip that's a destination is a right turn and a left turn out on, say, High Street or whatever. So my point is that.
Essentially, unless they know the area and they say, I'm gonna take a right out of there.
But that's the, that's the kinda stuff that y'all have to look at to clarify a little better.
Yeah.
So I'm with you though on the, on the ninety percent or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Andrew, while we're still talking about traffic coming in and out, uh, I asked Elena and she asked the police department to, to, to do some research on over the last six years of, of what the crash figures were at the Ellsworth Car Wash on High Street. Because during the winter.
Oh, okay.
Specific, I mean, more interesting in the winter because you got the car, you know, the cars coming out of the car wash, water's going on the street, freezing. And they reported in the past six years, a total thirty-six crashes. Report in this area, only three of those identified road conditions is a contributing factor. So I'm trying to open up to you, how are you gonna keep water from dripping off the cars? I know there's blowers, but I've been through enough car washes to know that you can have the water blown off the car, but there's still water dripping when you, when that thirty seconds or forty-five second runs out of the blower. And so water invariably, I'm guessing, is gonna come out on a Dean Street and the winter is gonna freeze.
Well, um, I, I think a, a couple or I think two conditions are a little bit different here than they are, let's say, at the Ellsworth Car Wash. One, I mean, I think we have a grade at the entrance that's gonna more promote water to run versus freeze. We, we have a five percent grade in the entrance, entering the site or leaving the site. We also have a grade that is I think it's, it's between seven and eight percent on the road. So, and we have a catch basin immediately down gradient of the entrance. We're approximately twenty feet down gradient of the entrance, but to intercept stormwater. So we, I, I mean, at the Ellsworth Car Wash, there's a relatively flat area there that kind of just seems to
Collect water.
Collect water. And there's kinda no place for it to run right there. So I, I think this is a much better situation grade wise than, than it is out there.
I don't know what the temperature is.
I can't speak to the equipment that they have down there. I don't know what it is. Um, but another, another thing that these units do is, say it's a pickup truck like down there potentially, and I don't know, but if they go through with a pickup truck and they have older units, older equipment, that pickup truck will fill up the wa, like the bed will fill up with water. The, these units have a sensor that shut it off. It'll recognize that it hasn't, that it has a bed on it, an open bed, and it shuts off, so it will not, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, do soaps or, or rinse or anything like that. So it doesn't fill the bed with water, which obviously would lead to a lot more water going out into the, into the, uh, into the yard. And then, again, we do, we do, uh, double drives, which I don't know if they're doing that as well. Um, so we're, we're extra drying the vehicle whilst in there. Uh, so yeah, you do get some residue, but it's basically just wet tires, pretty much is the only water coming out of the wash.
You know, I guess that's one of those things that you're not gonna know what's gonna happen until it happens. Until, you know, if this facility is built and, you know, if it becomes a problem. Again, you know, should it be somebody turning off High Street on the Dean Street and just happen to be going to, to Water Street and hits a patch of ice? And, you know, through no fault of this person, you know, gets into a crash.
Or even pedestrians walking up the side of the street.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's something to consider.
Can I ask another different question? Uh, just to clarify, y'all are, are talking about putting in a new sidewalk or re, renovating the old sidewalk?
Yeah.
All the way from, from, uh, High Street down to the property, down to the, uh, I guess southerly property line?
Well, I mean, be, below our entrance, I'm not sure that it really needs to be redone.
But the, but the, but the, the intention though is to
It's gonna be contiguous.
Have a good serviceable sidewalk that you're taking more or less responsibility for that whole way. It, it, either it's good now and leave it there or replace stuff. Okay. The other thing has to do with the, uh, buffer, uh, that you're talking about on the side that's a bu, there's a house that has a bux there. And you asked for a, uh, not to put a buffer up, right? Uh, but put, to put a six foot high picket fence. My question there is, um, if it was a vegetation buffer, how high would the vegetation be and how thick would it be relative to a six foot fence? And it's a six foot picket fence, right?
Well, I mean, a solid, it would be a solid.
Solid fence.
Solid fence.
Okay, so it's not really picket fence?
No, it's, no.
Okay.
Pickets ends.
So, but if, according to our, and I'm sorry that I should know these, this thing. You know, according to our standard for buffers.
Yeah.
How many trees and how big would they have to be to, to satisfy the standards?
So the standard for between residential and non-residential uses, um, when it's a, on the rear side of the lot is ten feet width or depth, depending on how you're looking at it. A minimum of eight trees and thirteen shrubs per hundred linear feet. And then I think the caliper for deciduous trees is one and a half inches up when you plant it.
Okay.
Six inch, you know, six inches up, it's one and a half inches. And if it's coniferous, it's six feet tall at time of planting.
Okay. I mean, that was, I mean, that was a question I had too, right? And I, I think this, the, the buffer, I mean, is something, the request for the waiver versus vegetation is something we really need to ask the neighbors. You know, uh, downhill neighbors, the crosses, and I'm not sure who's on the back, you know?
I mean, they, they received notice, so.
Okay, but I mean, um, some may be here tonight to address that, but, uh.
Yes.
I think, I'm not sure what Andrew's reason for requesting a waiver is, whether it's cost or, or whatever, but.
I, personally, well, I mean, if, if we, if we went away from the, if we went away from the bypass lane or what have you, um, we've got all kinds of space. But I was thinking as far as for immediacy, let's say the minute this is done, and I was looking at freshies as an example, because it's close by and, um, you know, it abuts the other side of this property to the north, if you will. And, um, you know, they use the fence, um, and if we put up a fence, a solid fence that is six feet high, then there is just, there's nothing seeping through it. Versus vegetation, there's still gonna be holes, if you will.
Is the, is the, on that side, okay? You know, so you come up from the street and it flattens for the, for the site. Does it go up then to the adjacent property?
It does go up a little bit.
So it's six feet plus however far it went up over what the, in essence, the, the floor is of the buildings and the driveways and whatnot. So it may be like really relative to the building, an eight foot high thing. Because it's the six that, of the fence itself, and then there's two feet from the, the slope up. Is that right?
I think one of the things to keep in mind with a fence, I mean, it does work pretty well in an urban environment and to your point about solid versus, one of those things is headlights, right?
Yeah. Which is a way better, uh, in the short haul, for sure.
So, um.
And so we're, and we're, so we're really talking about like a, a stockade fence.
We're talking about, yeah, more of a.
And certainly not any kind of chain link fence, which would be horrible.
Right, no, no.
Okay, so it's, it's not, okay.
Yes.
I think the overall, you'll see, um, that I made the suggestion in here that there be a kind of comprehensive waiver, landscaping waiver request to say, we can't quite meet this standard because there's a few that combine together here based on the zoning, um, the uses, the neighboring uses. So it's a little more intense than your average site that you see here, what's required. But they are trying to work with two frontages and a lot of things. There's also opportunity within the public right of way, um, we have some sort of streetscape improvements there, not so much vegetative. But anyway, all that to say, um, if you can't quite meet it, a waiver is a good way to show how you're getting close to it. So you requested a waiver
Correct.
Just from the, the buffer to the residential neighbors. Then during the TRT process, we added some landscaping to the high street, high street front yard. Which actually I think meets, but
That does meet.
Then Dean Street doesn't get anything, right? So I think it would be best if we can kinda look at it comprehensively, um, at this meeting. If you're inclined to say that you would be willing to grant such a waiver based on X and Y. I can look at that whole picture as we get to final.
And, and if we approve this at, you know, as complete or whatever, we are also, we also have to deal with those waivers, right, tonight?
You, well, so it's a little bit weird because you asked for the one I'm suggesting, looking at two sec, you know, waiting two sections. But unless you're opposed to that, I don't think it's a problem to grant that. Well, you need to know that, hmm, it's not a waiver from the landscaping plan request. It's a waiver from the standards and criteria to say it doesn't quite meet the letter of it, but it's good enough.
So is that.
Because he's done these other things.
So it's an, it's an.
Gotcha. But is, is it, is it a part of it, whatever motion we would have to make going forward?
Well, tonight is the preliminary, so I think we need to set the expectation.
But we were talking about, about waivers before and.
Right, right. I, I think what, whatever we, whatever we decide, we need to set the expectation so they know next time back.
No, and that certainly sounds fair.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a mix of, for the purpose of completeness, you've been shown landscaping.
Right.
So that's not really a question for that. That, that would come later, but it does help set the expectation for.
Okay.
You know, by the letter of the downtown zoning buffer requirements, there should be landscaping on the Dean Street frontage. There's not. So like, we know we're gonna get to that point next month, for example. So just opening it up now.
Okay. Now what about landscaping? What I don't see on any of your site plans, Andrew, is, okay, I see where your property, uh, borders the tainters. But then there's also a house that I believe on Elm Street. Your piece of property kinda goes up.
It does. We're not, I mean, we're greater than, I mean, there's vegetation there and we're greater than twenty-five feet from it.
Okay. I can't tell. I mean, it doesn't show, it doesn't show your whole lot on any of these diagrams.
You're right?
No. Okay. Yeah, we'll get that on there.
So here's the property line.
No. This property goes up. That's, that's the downhill property.
Right, and then there's a, but there, and there's a house right here.
Yeah, but this goes up.
Oh, 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 right, yeah, 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 yeah. It's, it's kind of an irregular shape.
L shape.
Okay, all right.
The satellite imagery is helpful sometimes to just visualize.
I'll use the satellite imagery for that. Yep.
Not instead of, but in addition.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the west side of the property, you say fence, is that also a six foot solid fence?
Yes, that's correct.
That's downhill a little bit, right?
It is, yeah.
So the area says snow storage over there and the vacuums are to the east of it?
Yes.
Is that accessible via car? So I'm just trying to look at the traffic patterns. I can get my car washed, come out.
Yeah, so you come out and you can drive over there.
And you can drive all the way to the fence line?
There's a detention pond between the edge of the pavement and the fence. So I, so I've got, I've got sixty feet of pavement there. So, I, so I've got, I've got sixty feet of pavement there. I need approximately forty feet for my maneuvering, and then I've left, so I have twenty feet where a vehicle could then pull up to the vacuum, each side of the vacuum essentially, and vacuum.
And then, how, how do they get out?
I guess they did, they, not a guess. They would have to just, they would have to back up and drive out.
So, far as the car, if I've got my car coming out of the wash.
You would drive straight down to the vacuum.
Straight down.
Right.
And then, I can't go any farther than those vacuums.
Correct.
And I have to back out until you.
It's on site, so.
What's that?
I said, it's on site, but part of that's just their problem.
With that in hand, being a little tighter, if Andrew moves the, the whole building to the west.
Well, I think he has to take a comprehensive look at what a revised site plan looks like.
Yeah. Do you want to open up the public hearing?
Yeah, I'm gonna see if there's any other questions from the board members.
Is that a no?
Did we get a response from the sewer department? Not yet.
They were rubbing their hands in the meeting, though, when they calculated the feet.
I would imagine. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to address the board, please come up to the podium, state your name, the town of your residence, and whatever other information you'd like to provide to us.
Hello, my name is Albert Hammond, most of you know me. Our family's been in business here for almost seventy years. I'm gonna address a few issues here. And the issues that you just recently talked about moving, maybe moving the building and taking that eleven-foot drive lane out, that's very important, because people get in line, and people are used to waiting, and they will wait. And then, all at once, something changes them, and they will wait for an hour. They're gonna wait on Dean Street. Now, from what I've heard here, what I'd like to know for the answer from Andrew, or the gentleman here, is each car wash, how many cars will they wash per hour?
Per bay, or?
Per bay, per bay. Each one, each side.
So, I would, I would say a maximum, the maximum we could put through is ten cars per bay, in an hour.
Okay. His car wash is exactly what mine is, on ten cars per bay, per hour. I averaged today, because I, yours coming here, I had seven cars in each line waiting. So, that means, and how much water per car do you use on each side?
Well, we're getting into, Mr. Hammond, we're getting into a little more information than what we really need to know.
Okay, all right, I'll go by from that, because I will bring that.
He should be answering his questions.
One back in a few minutes then.
What's that, I, I didn't hear you.
I'm gonna bring that water back in a few minutes, because how his answer was on water and dripping.
Okay, but you should be addressing us.
Okay, all right, I see, all right. Now, people do drive off, that, that happens all day long, and they get in line, they wait, and they drive off. Now, we have attendants. One of the other things that we have problems with is people on cellphones. If you don't have attendants, people on cellphones gets distracted real fast, and they follow up your lines, and people don't park as close together as you think they want to park together to hold in the lanes you have. And when we're talking a few minutes ago, we started out at fifteen feet, then we went seventeen feet, and then we went up to somebody's truck, it stopped, was nineteen point five feet. And that's the standard on most Chevy Suburbans, GMCs, Dodges. But now, there is, made by three individual companies, Dodge, GMC, Chevrolet, and Ford, a new truck out. It's twenty-two feet long. It has a full bed and two full doors, so the front, each side, they're the same-sized doors. They're twenty-two feet. The day, I had two of them at one time in my car wash. When you've got that much space, there's gotta be a backup somewhere. How to, because we live in Hancock County, Maine. More people drive SUVs, crossover SUVs, pickup trucks, than we get in a car wash on certain days. The day, your average car, your Subaru, Honda, Civics, all of those ones, they're all getting longer. So, they're longer than what you, what Andrew was planning in his matrix. And that matrix from the end of the building to the curbing is forty feet. That is very tight to get these vehicles in there. So, that's gonna back the cars up, out on the Dean Street. Now, also, now, when we wash cars, we use wheel blasters, we use side blasters, we put a lot of water on the cars. And when we had to try to dry cars the best we can, we put drying agents onto it, we'll put a wax onto it, we're blowing from the top down. We've driven a lot of water in the fender wells and all that area. We can't blow that all off. It is going to come out, the drip time, I, because he has no drip time inside the car wash. It all has to be what he doesn't get there outside. And you can, I, I watch it every day. You're gonna have fifty to seventy-five feet of drip time, and everything is going downhill to Dean Street. And so, what happens there, some pickup trucks, like he mentioned, they have open bodies, awful lot of trucks a day have the covers on them. So, you don't have as much water as you used to get in the back of pickup trucks. But you're still gonna get an amount of water that is going to come on Dean Street. Now, if you come on the Dean Street, and you go left up to High Street, you're gonna have to stop at that stoplight. Your car is still gonna be dripping right there, and that is gonna ice up. Now, if they don't go that way, and you still have some water in your body, it's not gonna come out until you go up on Water Street. Now, Dean Street, on that street, not only does it have the regular housing, housing there, you've got Hancock Street, and you've got the Dean Street apartments. You're going to be adding at peak hours, more cars here. Now, we know, in the summertime, early spring and fall, from somewhere around twelve-thirty to two o'clock, traffic backs up from the Catholic Church all the way past the, end of Beale's Avenue. It does the same thing on Water Street. So, you're looking at car counts, you're looking at, every time you add something, you do have a lot more cars. And so, you just have to take all of those things into consideration. Does anybody else, does anyone wanna ask me any questions?
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
How many, how many days out of the year would you guess that you have seven cars stacked two, two bays deep, like you said you had today?
At this time of year, we have it about sixty percent of the time.
Well, what does that equate into, like, over the course of a week, how many days would you say out of the week, you know, your staff like that?
Well, why don't we, we're getting too far, I mean.
Okay, all right, I'll stop.
Well, I was just, I was just curious.
You guys can have that conversation elsewhere.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're all set, unless anybody has a question for Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
How you doing? I'm Les Spalding from the Ellsworth Car Wash, and I wanna agree with Albert on the cars backing up. We have, if you look at, I'm sure you've all gone by our lot, we get back up onto High Street, and I have a lane that's probably a hundred and fifty feet long, and we're going over into our car wash, and I have an eighty-five-foot building and probably fifty, sixty feet at my exit. And we do get backups onto High Street, and, I mean, you know, cars going by there, unfortunately, a lot of times, fifty miles an hour, and cars will still wait out there and, and sit there to get in to our building. And we always, and we're always have someone at our lot, we, we have someone directing traffic on those busy days within, in our facility. We, you know, create extra lanes and stuff. So, it's a, it's a boomer bust business. It's not one of those things you can say, all right, I'm gonna wash a thousand cars a week, and they're gonna be evenly dispersed. It's a sunny day, it's thirty degrees out in February, and everybody and their brother's gonna get their car washed, and, you know, that, like Albert said, they'll wait. So, you're, you are gonna have backups. You look at a day like today, it wasn't even, I wouldn't even consider today a very nice day, it rained for a good part of the day, we've got a pretty lousy forecast. There was times I had eight cars backed up, and I can move the cars at triple the speed these guys are. I have three cars in my building at the same time, it's conveyor, so they're all moving through, and, you know, I don't have to wait to wash an individual car. So, I, I mean, looking at the site, I don't see any way that you went back up into the street. You look at Albert's lot, he, I go by and I see, you know, I pay attention every time I go by there, and I've seen, you know, ten cars in each line. I mean, Albert's got probably the best layout for this, because he's got about two hundred yards of just leading right to his wash, where he doesn't have to work, worry about the backup, but I don't, I don't see how you don't get it with this, with this layout. And the other thing is going to the, addressing the, you know, a destination, car washes are a destination, but Ellsworth's a little different. If you go, if you come into my lot in the summer, you'll see a lot of people from Massachusetts, New York, Connecticut, they happen to be going through, they've got bugs in their window, they've got a dirty car, they're not used to this. These people live in a city, they've never had dirt on the car. So, they drive by, and they're, oh, whoa, they, you know, they've got mosquitoes in their window, they don't even have mosquitoes, you know? So, we do get a lot, a lot of summertime visitors that just happen to be driving by, and they have a dirty car. So, I think Ellsworth's a little unique. I mean, Bangor or Brewer, probably not so much, but where we're getting, you know, so many people driving through, we do get that traffic. So, you have to, when you're looking at your traffic planning here, you have to consider that people are gonna drive, well, there's a car wash, and they're gonna pull in, and then they're gonna pull back out, because it happens, I can tell you. Like I said, you go, go into my yard, and it's full of out-of-state place all summer long.
Now, Mr. Spalding, let me ask you a question. As, as cars come out of your facility, back years ago, I was on the police department, and we dealt with ice building up in front of your facility.
Yep.
And do you still have that problem now?
We have, we have an unfortunate situation, we're at the bottom of a hill, so we do get any runoff, and I'll tell you, on the two-taker lane right there, there's a, there's a manhole cover that the drainage from, from the hill comes down, and like, right now, I bet that's buried under, under snow, so we get the disadvantage, and we have a flat spot. So, we have to go and salt the road. We do that personally. I mean, I do agree with the gentleman over here, that, you know, we're, we're a tough situation, because it's pretty flat, but we do have to salt that. But the good thing is, cars are not immediately going up a hill with icy tires or ice to, to leave our property, where, you know, if there's a really steep grade there, they might slip for a second and, and not be able to get out into traffic. And we also don't have people turning left there, so they can kind of be a little more patient. We don't have the traffic flow that you would have in front of Dean Street, because of the one-way street. So, it's a little easier to get out of for us. But, yeah, there's, there's always gonna be ice building, like I said, we'll, we'll salt the, the street out in front of us.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And, you know, what was another point I was gonna make, and I can't remember what it was now, but I, I do, I just think that there's no way you're not gonna have people sitting on Dean Street. If people sit on High Street when we're busy, with traffic going by forty, forty-five miles an hour, they're gonna sit on Dean Street, because it's, you know, so slow. And the other thing, going to what Albert said, cellphones is a big thing, we have to go up, sometimes you almost have to knock on a window to get people to pull forward in the line, because they're sitting there talking on the phone. So, you can't count on, you know, people not absorbing their conversation and moving up and staying two feet from someone. It's not gonna happen. We have to, I mean, sometimes you'll have to go up and knock on a window, can you pull up, please? You know, it's just the nature of the world now. And the other thing on that, too, is, you're gonna have situations where someone pulls up, and there's people crowded behind them, and they realize they don't have their wallet. So, you gotta have a way to back people up, get them out of the line. They're gonna be in the line, they sat there for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and they realize, when they go to pay, that they don't have their wallet. So, that's something else you gotta figure, it's going to happen. It happens all the time. So, just, you know, things to consider.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, let's get on the.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Jason Barrett. I am in the butter. I own at thirty-three Elm Street, which is on the backside. And I'm here carrying the torch for my family, wife, four kids. And it's been interesting, not related to this, but just lately, I've had the opportunity to wonder what my house in my neighborhood looked like, back before I bought the place almost fifteen years ago. And it was a different place. Fellow bought a few years before we did, his house was in pretty rough shape when he bought. House across the way was in pretty rough shape. This is on Elm Street. Our house was in pretty rough shape. They bought, started to fix theirs up. People crossed the street, bought, they fixed theirs up. We got, and the people had started to fix, and we've, and we finished, Elm Street now is a very nice residential neighborhood, a lot of families, of, I think, a, a, a place where there can be a lot of town pride, you've got Fog Town down at the end. And this, I'm, you know, sitting here, hearing about this development, with all due respect, I'm horrified. I feel like a fool that haven't sold, to hear, just about the noise alone, and then to talk, to talk about the light pollution, and you talk about, okay, you got people in a twenty-four-hour operation, not only is it the lights of the business they have to worry about, but the headlights of all those people coming in, shining them into the back, backs of these residential neighborhoods and these houses, and the sides of these houses. And you're talking about stacking seven, you know, four, seven cars deep, fourteen on there for prolonged periods of time, and those people aren't necessarily all, you know, in there like church mice. You got car radios, you know, somebody's on their cellphone in an unattended lot, they're not moving ahead, they, somebody's been waiting for half an hour to get in there, they're tooting on the horn. There's a lot of, there's a lot of commotion here, and this is in the downtown zone. You look in the, in the, what does the downtown zone mean? It says, it's what's special about Ellsworth. In particular, this street, Dean Street, Elm Street, right in there, especially as you move down those streets, those are residential neighborhoods. Those are quiet streets. You've heard that term used over and over again.
Now, Mr. Barrett, let me just.
Yes.
Give you just a second, I mean, just, you know, we have to go by our ordinance.
No, I understand.
And theoretically, I mean, not theoretically, realistically, I mean, this is allowed use in that zone. I mean, you may not want it as a neighbor, but, I mean, we follow the ordinance, and, I mean, there's obviously good points you're bringing up, but this isn't allowed use.
And I understand that, that it's commercial, in, in that sense, it may be allowed, that it's, it's commercial, but there are other components, and it's, it's out of character. And so, I'm, I, and it, it is definitely inconsistent with the, the nature of that area, particularly as it's situated on Dean Street. And so, just as to the noise, you know, ninety-four decibels was mentioned, eighty-three decibels. I was a little curious about the levels of noise and what are equivalents, and the American Academy of Audiology defines anything over eighty decibels as loud, anything over eighty decibels as very loud, and they talk about things that are loud as an alarm clock, traffic, vacuums. In a twenty-four-hour operation, where you're gonna have noise, you know, at any and all hours, that are above those decibel amounts, in terms of a residential neighborhood, you have really significant impacts. This idea that there are gonna be a bay, you know, multiple, you know, little vacuums lined up there for not only after the car wash, people are gonna just out there in an open air, operating a vacuum at kind of all hours, that. air, operating in a vacuum at kind of all hours, that does seem to be inconsistent with, you know, kind of just the residential nature of everything around that. I also think the sound impacts are gonna be particularly amplified in that location, just in terms of, if you think about what's on, on the other side of the street, you know, sound isn't, somebody said, said, sound isn't linear. Just on the other side of that street, you have that, where the Denny's, that used to be, that location, and you've got a very large retaining wall that's just on the other side of that street. That's gonna reflect all that noise back into the neighborhood. So it's not gonna dissipate, but it's gonna amplify. So I, I think noise is a huge issue, hasn't, I, I don't think been fairly addressed in terms of those impacts on, on the residence, the residential nature of that, of that area. Again, the light issue, not only do you have the, the lights of the business, but the lights of the, the headlights of the users to consider. The hours of operation, I think, is a huge issue. In, in terms of, I haven't heard anything about runoff and the chemicals involved with this, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, that's, you know, being addressed and, and considered, but as somebody who abuts and raises, you know, has a garden in the backyard, that kind of stuff, I mean, that's fairly, it's, it's a concern, particularly if you're talking about that a portion of the lot is gonna have a retaining wall, which means that it's elevated. If there's any kind of overflow, where does that go? The, the traffic issues, I appreciate the attention that's being paid to those. And you've got, you know, half a dozen potential traffic impacts. You know, you've got the High Street, Dean Street intersection, and you talked about right turns and left turns. But you also have, again, the impacts of people who are on High Street who want to turn. And, you know, if somebody tries to make a left-hand turn on High Street, you know that it creates some challenges for everybody who's behind that and they're trying to get over, and then you've got the straight lane down closer to the, the High Street, Main Street intersection. But it, it's, it's quite a challenging and potentially dangerous situation as it is, and I think this would add to it. As somebody who drives and is familiar with the, the traffic in that area, I, I just have to say that the intersection between Dean and Water Street, if you haven't driven that, I encourage you to do it and come at, come at it several ways. It's one of the worst intersections that we have in town. If you're coming, you know, towards town, you're coming towards the Main Street, it's Main Street, Water Street intersection, you're coming that direction, you come over the hill past the, the harbor, and then you're coming down a hill, and then the Dean Street intersection is right there. It's, it's a sharp turn. Somebody's put a power pole, utility pole right there, the road's not very wide. And so, as somebody who tries to make that turn, it always feels very unsafe for a bunch of reasons. For the car that you're turning into, you're worried that somebody coming over the hill doesn't, doesn't hit you in the rear. And it's, it's not a great intersection to be pushing cars out of, or to be suggesting that cars are gonna be able to use that as an appropriate way to kind of get onto the site. So I, I, I think that traffic here is, is a, is a real problem. The space in terms of, if you look at the, I, I, I think this is very interesting that you've got two of the folks who run these types of businesses here, I appreciate that they're sharing the benefit of their just experience. If you look at what's in common about their locations, and then you look at this site, this site doesn't really fit. What their long experience has shown is necessary and even might not be adequate. I mean, they both said that they've got issues with a lot of the things that you've talked about, the stackage, the overflow. This site is radically under-equipped, if you will, as to what these folks have. And to think about that small little lot, having all these cars stacked up 24 hours a day with the noise, you know, and essentially in people's backyards, is, is, is a concern that I haven't heard adequately addressed. Want to just mention about the fence. I'm totally opposed to a, a, a waiver in terms of what the buffering. The fence as to the, the gas station of Freshies Shell was mentioned. That is an eight-foot vinyl sealed fence, and it's probably not even adequate as it is. And I will say that the raised elevation over the residences there means that we get exaggerated light spillover into our yard. And, and even at eight feet, you still got a ton of noise spillover. 'Cause people that are out, you know, late at night, doing whatever they're doing at their night owls, that's fine, but their car stereos are running, you've got a lot of stuff that's going on that's essentially unregulated if you don't, if you have an unintended lot. So I'd just say, as, as to the fence in particular, the eight-foot fence there, vinyl sealed, has been a blessing, but it, even that probably isn't adequate. I appreciate your, your patience here in, in hearing this, and I appreciate the attention that you're giving this. Overall, I mean, the, the, kind of the, the, kind of the notion or the concept that comes to mind as I sit here and I listen to this and consider this, is a main expression. It's that somebody is trying to fit 10 pounds of potatoes into a five-pound sack. And it's just, I think we can do better here. Thank you.
Thank you. John, can I? Well, let me just see if anybody else that hasn't spoken.
Yep, right in the middle. Go get, you're next.
I actually would like this gentleman to go first, actually, 'cause I'm the newest resident here, so.
Thank you, my name is Roy Blankhorn, and I'm a resident of Dean Street, approximately three properties away from where the location would be. I would just like to say that I think it's great that the property's gonna be developed. I don't really see how a car wash would be an issue when, for about 15 years, Fosters were in a car wash that was right on the other side of it. Living in Ellsworth all my life, for at least 25 years, I could never think of a time that the Harmon's Car Wash or the Ellsworth Car Wash would be stacked out on the High Street. I think a lot of these numbers are on the high side, like you're looking at the most amount of traffic that's gonna come. But realistically speaking, when are, when do you suppose there would be 10 cars sitting in line waiting for the car wash, when now you have a third option? So you say, oh, this car wash is busy, let's check the other car wash, let's check the other car wash. For everybody to say that all the traffic's gonna go down to Dean Street and turn to Water Street, that might not be accurate, because you've got Edgewood Way you could take, come back out to High Street, or you can always turn up to High Street. To assume that most people aren't gonna be aware of the area and where, how to turn, most people from the area will say, okay, it's rush hour, it's 8 o'clock in the morning, I'm not gonna come to Dean Street and I'm gonna try to turn left on the High Street, because you're gonna sit there all day. So you're gonna take a right, you're gonna come up, and you're gonna turn back around. As far as the constant noise and the light, when Denny's was opened, there was constant noise, constant sound going on there. There's constant sound happening at Irving all hours of the night, you've got delivery trucks, you've got people. I don't think that it's gonna add that much more noise to the already noisy environment. And being a commercial area, I think it's the right fit for them to be, to put a commercial business there. Maybe the 24-hour part is a little bit too much, the 11 o'clock at night, because right now, I believe it's 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM is the sound ordinance. Maybe something around there would be more fitting. And my only question is, most car washes, you can have the option for touch or touch free. Why is Andrew wanting to have one bay that's only touch and one bay that's only touch free? Why couldn't he do two combo units? Would be my only question.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing today? As I said, I'm a new resident of Dean Street, I live at 5016 Street, that's why I'm here. I received a notice about the car wash being put there. I have some of our notes that we've thought about.
What's your name, sir?
What's that?
Your name.
Oh, my name is William Iainuzi. I have some notes that we've thought about over the past few days since we received the notice, if I could share with the planning board, just so we can go over them together.
Let's get past them.
All right.
Thank you.
First time here. So, yeah. So first off, I just want to say, just from hearing, have taken a lot in from this meeting right now. Definitely concerned about traffic issues on Dean Street, mostly just because as people have said that it is more of a destination spot. I do believe that this has the possibility to have a huge drive-by influence because of the tourists that come through in the summer. And that those people won't be coming and turning a right turn into the car wash, they'll be making a left turn on High Street, leaving the park, going on to the car wash, then coming out onto Dean Street and making another left turn back onto High Street on the way out. So, it's just a quick. So first off, it's a really nice lot, and residential prioritization, I think, is like a really important aspect of the downtown responsibility in Ellsworth. If a new structure is gonna be built, should there be a requirement for some sort of housing? And is a car wash the structure that is new that should be built in downtown Ellsworth? We're really worried about the runoff from the water. I hear there's not gonna be any water that leaves the car wash, I find that impossible. Is there gonna be some sort of environmental, kind of like, study for all the water, every time, every time it rains on Dean Street? It's a river just running down there, straight into the Harbor Park. So that's really a big concern for us with whatever chemicals go into washing cars and the like. So the High Street traffic patterns, just like I said, I think you're gonna have a lot of people, I mean, just from where I live, you watch people do the craziest things. And to my neighbor's point, there are a lot of offshoots, Edgewood and going down Dean Street, but I watch people utilize them in the worst way possible. Doing a big turn and coming right back onto Dean Street, so they can go the opposite way down Dean Street. It's not, it's kind of an unregulated road, basically, that people do whatever they want on there. And then people will even just park their car, which also creates some sort of possibility for, for accidents and things. How does the new business fit into the comprehensive plan for Ellsworth's growth? And how's it draw people to downtown? Like I said, it's a destination, I guess people will wake up in the morning, but also if it is a destination for the local people, is this the property that it should be? If, aren't there other places? I don't want to stop a business from starting, but is there another, from what I hear, there's so many concerns already on this lot, that there has to be another lot that's a lot less trouble in Ellsworth. And that wouldn't require a lot of improvements made to the property or the plan, which the plan feels not real. You're saying it doesn't even have the right, like, you know, doesn't have even the right zoning on the map where people's property lines are respected. So, and a lot of the things I hear are just, this is what the sound could be, this is what the lights could be. Obviously, it's all could be possible, you know, it's all just make-believe until the business is real, of course. But a car wash just feels like not the thing to take all these risks on for the downtown community around, you know, the, all of us that live in this area. I definitely would love to see the property developed, absolutely. I walk my dog through that lot every single day. And now, if a car wash goes there, you know, we see the Denny's, there are people that park behind the Denny's all night, and they're just staring at my house, and I'm like, okay, I feel like that's a possibility, a 24-hour, or not a 24-hour car wash, is that, you know, maybe people will use it as a place to crash for the night. It's only a couple houses away from me, so. And then, yeah, job creation. Does anyone have to be there? And will there ever be anyone there? It sounds like, you know, people, the other experienced car wash owners here sound like they really need to have someone there that keeps people moving along, or else it's just a free-for-all. And we know that people, when it's a free-for-all, just don't make any good decisions. So, and, yeah, I appreciate you taking the time to hear my concerns, all right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Harbin, did you want?
I only want to just address one issue.
Is it something new, Albert?
Yes.
Okay.
The noise around the car wash at night and my vacuums. The rest of the reason we close at 7, the trailer park's right next to us, there is, we work hard not to have noise out there at night. And that is a thing. Young people come in, they put boom boxes on, they spend a lot of money on vacuums and doing all that, but they make noise, and we try our best not to have it. But that is an issue.
Carrie, did you have somebody on the line?
I do, yes.
Oh, did anybody else in the audience wanna, come on. Okay.
Here we go.
Maybe.
Maybe. I'm sorry, guys, I'll get there.
Hey, we voted for this, so.
And John Fink gave us the go-ahead to try it out. He said, yeah, go for it.
And where's John?
Clever.
Yeah. His parting shot. Well, let me, I'll close the public area at this point, if they come back. Carrie, just.
Could he type the question and you relay it to us?
Yeah, I.
Or, or Mr. Machine might be able to help.
If he just gets near me, it works. Always knows. So, before I clean my teeth, he's just right up here, he's at a large rock.
50 words of words.
Nope, the attendee, he bowed out, so.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
Okay, so close the public area. Any further questions from the board?
Yeah, Andrew, I actually thought of this one earlier, but I forgot about it, but a couple of folks have asked, see, the, the chemical runoff. So obviously, there's chemicals in the wash, vehicles are getting rinsed, they are getting dried, but I'm curious, like, are there any statistics for what percentage of those chemicals? I'm, I'm sure it's greater than absolute zero, so what actually leaves the bay?
I don't know if you have an answer to that, Aaron, or not. I don't have an answer off the top of my head.
I don't, yeah, I don't have an answer to, like, statistically, what leaves the site, but I mean, ideally, we try to capture everything in the bay. I, yeah, I don't know, I'll have to ask that question to, like, the Simon and I's rep or something, I, I don't have any answer.
I guess the others, the other component of that question, then if you're gonna be talking to them, would be beyond how much leaves the bay, I can imagine they'd probably ask you that, it's your bay, but those chemicals themselves, free, I guess the toxicity is really the question I'm asking.
Yeah, I actually, when everybody was making those comments about the chemicals, I, I sent an email to my rep and just said, who's gonna be the best person to speak true knowledge to this? You know, I, I, I can't, I'm not, I'm not a chemical rep, so I can't. I mean, maybe a couple of those guys in the, in the, in the audience know better than me, but I already sent an email to, to try to get that clarified.
But this will come up during the final, so. Have a good answer.
Oh, there was, Andrew, there was, sorry, I can't find it right now, but on the, I believe on the western side of the property, is there an easement?
There's a five-foot wide easement.
So it goes five foot on each side?
It does.
What was the purpose of that? It sounded like it was for a driveway?
It was a shared, it was for a shared driveway.
To what?
Yeah, it, it was, it was, it was essentially for the abutter to get back, because it only goes as far as the abutter's farm. That's how, that's what the word is.
The abutter on Elm Street?
The, no, the abutter on Dean Street. It go, it's, it's essentially, I mean, we're not, we're staying away from it, we're not encumbering it, it's already there, they have the right to utilize that five feet onto this property. this property.
Okay.
We, we have, we have the right to go five feet on, we, Aaron has the right to go five feet to utilize that, but we're not, we're staying away from it. I mean, we don't want to cause any conflict or anything like that.
Okay, and this is on the western edge of the property, Carrie?
It's on the western edge of the property, right. So it's about, it's below where the fence is shown.
Okay, so that would be to the west of whatever fence or...
Right, whatever, whatever.
So it was five feet on either side of the line?
Yes, it's five feet either side of the line.
Okay, thank you.
So, we've just tried to stay away from that line, period.
Any other questions from the board?
John, so the person that had their hand raised to speak is back online now, I don't know if we can open up another public hearing, or if it's...
I think it's just, I figured I'd bump it in backup if he's, because it's the same person that was here before. Okay, so I'll open a public hearing and...
Okay, thank you. There we go.
Maybe?
Maybe. I can see him on line. Mm-hmm.
I think I hear him coming to rescue.
I know, he's already coming.
Because I do need me.
So, not on you?
Not on you? No? I don't know, I should be out there. Can you hear us, John? Can you try to speak? I don't know if he's got headphones on, he's on mute or not, but... Yeah, because he should be able to speak right now, he's got everything right.
He did it right, yeah.
He's trying. I see him muting and unmuting and...
Where's Lip's moving?
No video. Now, I don't know how he's connecting, but...
If we can't really connect with him, I would suggest that we allow him to submit a written thing, because he was here and tried.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing again.
Sorry about that.
And maybe you can communicate him, that, you know, you can send staff an email or...
At least, we're just preliminating tonight.
Yeah. So, any other questions from staff or the applicant?
Nope.
Good. Actor?
I guess I'm a little confused on the buffer waiver concept, Elena, but as far as tonight's purposes go for completeness review, so we have a buffer plan proposed, whether or not it satisfies the requirements of the ordinance, that's for later date.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at with it.
Okay.
So we don't need a condition at this point?
Yeah.
In a motion, we do not need to decide.
No, I don't think you do.
And we have a lighting plan.
Yep.
We have, now, is there an issue with right title interest? We're talking about these easements, is there any...
There, there are. A total of three easements. Two of the easements essentially will go away because they were for the sharing of a driveway or the driveway off of High Street. Now that this is all one lot, those two easements will go away.
Yeah, and the applicant has full control over those laws, so they can just...
Yes, correct.
... nullify the easement. Okay, so the only remaining easement's the one you discussed, and you're not encumbering it.
We are not encumbering it.
All right, those are my, those are my questions.
Is this the meeting to discuss hours of operation?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, we, we've talked about it a little, I mean, that's probably better at the final, and we can nail down certain times of operation. I mean, Mr. Wiswell has already talked about the fact that he's flexible.
Should they have, just as a point of interest, should they make a proposal for reduced hours of operation as part of their final?
You're very welcome.
It's up to them.
Right, right, I took that, it was just a suggestion. Did you hear that suggestion?
I, I brought that down.
Good, that's a, that's a good thing.
I'm looking at the spreadsheet on completeness review, map, tax math plot, we have incomplete, it's up in there.
I think it just somehow isn't on here, which, that's not a big...
Ah, it was on the revised SP2, as far as here.
The, the actual map and lot of what we're talking about, I think, I think it's not on the...
Oh, yeah, no.
It's just a silly little, I mean, not that silly, but we have enough information that we know where we are.
Okay, it's in the application, but it's not on the plan.
It'll be revised, any revision, okay.
Yeah, right.
And then, location name, width of existing streets, driveways, driveways, you have incomplete CTRT report, has that been addressed?
Well, you should, like, Dean Street's pretty well shown, but usually that should, so we've got, we've got High Street, we've got Dean Street, so if you're showing the width, you should really show the entire street, right, to depict it on a plan, plus you're looking at all intersections, driveways, sidewalks, et cetera, within 200 feet. So we've been struggling with this zooming in and out plan, but I think that one, showing all of that would resolve that, plus those other things, so we're a little bit away from your question.
So, I think we can, we would need to see a plan from a higher view, Andrew, that shows, as Elena, and that sounds like...
Just lets you get the picture.
Or also, the plan doesn't show the entire property's boundary, too, as we've discussed earlier, so we would need that.
Right.
Okay. Tabulations of existing acres, number of acres in the development you have is incomplete, what does that reference to?
I think that mostly the biggest thing that I look for there is the existing impermeable area, which I know you calculated elsewhere, but it...
I did calculate it in the, in my stormwater analysis.
Yeah, it should be on the base plan, so that we have something to compare the post-development conditions to.
Okay, yeah, it's in, it's in a narrative, but yes.
Okay. Bike pedestrian systems not quite complete?
So that, I think, let me look at the language to be certain, but I think that's similar to others where it gets more into, you know, you're showing, right now, the sidewalks don't connect at the corner, so we are showing that they will connect. This is more to that, what's within 200 feet, you know, what is the rest of the system? And questions that I have about materials, so that we can ensure that those standards are met.
Okay. So again, that's something that is larger, can be addressed.
Can be refined, yep.
Fire suppression we have is incomplete?
I think just, it's been, the conversation's been in progress, but we'll need a letter at some point from...
Yeah, it will be.
Okay. And then we have the landscaping waiver we've discussed, so I just figured we'd go through it. I don't have any other questions.
Would you consider the, too many incompletes for this to be considered complete?
Yeah, I have real reservations with the status of the application. Yeah, I don't find this to be complete, rather than can put a bunch of conditions on it. Considering the feedback they've had from the community and board, my two cents are they need to come back with a more complete application and potentially address some of the concerns that have been raised.
I think a big part of that, too, is that you're probably going to make quite a few changes on the site plan as far as like the location of the building, egress, ingress. So, if somebody wants to put that in the motion.
Before we get to that point, I'll, I'll actually channel a little bit of John Fink here, as much for the public as everybody else. So, when the time comes, if we, if we see this plan back, what the board will be ruling on is the merits based on, based on our ordinances. That said, based on, I think, of what we've heard tonight, I would probably encourage all parties to consider potential operational difficulties with this location, even potential liabilities in the future. That's not a factor that we will be judging on, but it's one I would recommend thinking about, at least, based on where this lot is and some of the logistics that we've, that we've discussed.
I would make a motion, they move to find the application to be incomplete.
Is there a second?
Sure. I said several.
Okay. All in favor of it being found to be incomplete?
Hi.
You have your work cut out for you, Andrew.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your folks in the back for coming and giving your input.
Staff comments, or we moving on to the...
Yep. Give it one second. The building.
What's that?
Should we be doing something for John, then?
Yes, I've been thinking about that a lot. Trust me, you know, he's... I'm just saying, you know, when you give up the last 10 years of your life.
Before 10 years, Ellen.
Excellent, well, thank you, Aaron.
Is it that John?
He's around.
So I'll just try to keep it brief, because we're here a little late, just to follow up on the things that we talked about last week, or month. We talked about comprehensive plan, we talked about solar moratorium, you know, should be coming to an end relatively soon. So, we had also talked about scheduling a workshop, obviously, I did not actually schedule that, partly identifying some expertise to help us, so I've made contact with somebody who actually has helped the city in the future on a couple different things, had a great conversation with him, we're working out a little scope of, you know, what that consultancy can provide.
So I apologize, I didn't attend the city council meeting where that, where that happened, but were there specific concerns that were raised? Not just a general, I'm not sure about this, but were there specific concerns around solar development that could be, like, tactically addressed?
Right, I tried more than once to draw those out of the council and did not get really anything. Only one of the seven members really said anything, and it was to the effect of, these are subsidized, we don't know what the impact is on the community. So, you can go back and watch that, but that's pretty much the gist of it.
I mean, that was the point of the workshop, right, is to kind of flesh those things out.
I mean, Dale's really, he didn't have anything to say, it was just kind of, you know, what's the impact going to be on the community?
Right, so, I mean, I also, it is what it is at this point, but moratoria are meant to deal with brand-new land uses that you haven't addressed in your regulations at all, and the planning board did the work of preparing regulations. So it makes it an odd thing. I still have some ideas, and I think we've had enough experience with reviewing those projects to think about some things that could be changed, but also, maybe you don't have to make the hugest changes. And I think also that this consultant can kind of give not so much the technical answers, but talk more about the industry and the, the market of it, and what's going on with the policy that influences us seeing applications versus what's really going to be built.
So is that person available in the near future?
So we talked about, within the next three weeks to month, having a workshop with him. So I'll probably be prepared early next week to circulate better dates.
Does Noel?
I'm sorry?
Is it Noel?
No.
No.
But if that's another potential name, let me know.
No, Musson, Musson Group.
Oh, sure.
Okay, it's solar.
Okay, no, this isn't so much a planner as specifically in the field. So this is somebody who assisted with figuring out the city's contracts to purchase solar from the Mariahville Road arrays, and also had a role years ago when there was at one point consideration of expanding natural gas from Bucksport into town, like for residential, like, like big cities have, you know?
There was quite a bit of study done on that by Michelle Beal.
Mm-hmm, it was Michelle and Michelle time.
Ten fifteen years ago.
Yeah, so they're familiar, based in the Boston area now, but from Bangor and owning property in this area, too, so, and I think that he would be a great fit in terms of, like, just how he thinks about it. We had a great conversation, so we'll see what, we're still in the process of, here's what I can do for you, and I also have to look at my budget, but we have some ability to get that service. So that's where I stand with that. We'll probably, even without, you know, this little bit of delay since what we discussed at the last meeting, we probably wouldn't have been able to quite meet the, like, April 16th moratorium expiration, so we'll probably need to go to council in March and ask to extend it like two months, just to meet all the, because there's deadlines here for any amendments, then deadlines at planning board for any amendments, and trying to get them to all overlap, plus more than one workshop, plus the public hearings, like, it becomes challenging on the calendar. So, that's that. And then comp plan, so we kind of discussed that last month, and John, you in particular raised the question of, well, how do we do this if only a portion of what's really needed is budgeted in this year? So since having that conversation, the council chairman reached out and is sponsoring an agenda item for the February meeting, for us to give an update on how we see the process unfolding. He wants to make sure that there's, you know, as much communication to the public about the opportunities to participate as possible, which I completely agree with. That's a big, you know, that's one of the most important parts of the comp plan process is really ensuring that engagement from everyone who's willing to participate.
Is that, is that an eligible use for the stimulus funds?
Not really, but, so, we're in the midst of, like, the February agenda is being finalized right now, so you'll probably see one, if not two, most likely two, ideally two, items on there, and then the second would be more of a financial decision for them to make that would get the process underway sooner. But I don't want to say too much before we're sure if it's on the agenda, and I don't even know if all the councils are where...
Does it only meet once a month?
The council?
Yeah.
They do currently, there's actually, I believe, an item on the agenda where one counselor is advocating for meeting twice a month. I mean, well, they meet once a month, but then they have finance committee every Friday morning?
Yeah, okay.
So...
Shows how much I pay attention to the council.
You pay attention to dogs, right?
Try not to.
So, hopefully, or, not so much hopefully, but the plan is, there'll be some... there'll be some nice presentation at that next meeting, which is February 14th. It's off the usual schedule, and also hopefully some decision-making that allows us to put out an RFP sooner than later and form a committee and do all the things that need to be done. It's a lot going on.
Okay, well, just so you can stare into the dollars.
All right. Okay. And all, and no bylaws.
Thank the Lord. So move.
Second is.
All right.